This meeting of the Eau Claire City Council will come to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Beaton.
Here.
Bergy.
Here.
Christopherson.
Here.
Emmanuel. Gregert.
Here.
Kincaid.
Here.
Strobel.
Here.
Weld.
Here.
Worthman.
Here.
Jean. Thank you, Madam City Clerk, and welcome everyone to the Monday, May 21st session of the Eau Claire City Council. During its Monday night session, the council takes public input and holds public discussions, all of which prepare us for our legislative session, which convenes in these chambers tomorrow afternoon at 4:00. We do welcome citizens who are joining us and are grateful to Valley Media Works for streaming and broadcasting these proceedings for people who cannot attend in person. For people who want to address the council, I'll just briefly review the protocol. Once they introduce an agenda item, there's a staff presentation, and then council allows itself a few questions about the item, but we turn to public input as quickly as possible. When you approach the podium, if you wish to speak tonight, please start by saying your name and your address, and then speak about what is on your mind. We do -- our crowd is small tonight, but we try to hold speakers to five minutes. We just find that it's a fair protocol, gives the first speaker the same attention as the last speaker. Even when we have a small crowd, we try to stick within that five-minute period. Sometimes council members have questions once you're done saying what's on your mind, so if you just linger at the podium for a minute until I ask if there are questions. And lastly, if you have something you want us -- a message, a thing you want to say to us, but you're uncomfortable speaking, there are written comment sheets at the back of the room. They're blue. You can fill them out and leave them at the back of the room. They are distributed to council members before tomorrow's meeting, so we get that input also in preparation. With that introduction, we will get on with our agenda, which starts with a public hearing on an ordinance rezoning property located on the northwest corner of La Salle Street and East Princeton Avenue from R1A to R1. Mr. Allen.
Thank you, Madam President, and council members. Given before this evening is a request from Hasselwonder Brothers Incorporated to rezone the property in question. As you see here, identified in the hatched markings, the east side of the six-acre property to the northwest corner of East Princeton Avenue and La Salle Street. It is currently zoned R1A, which is an unsued low-density residential designation. The applicant is requesting to rezone this to be consistent with the balance of the property, which is R1 low-density residential zoning, in order to develop 27 single-family residential lots. This was heard before the planning commission last Monday. They are making a recommendation unanimously, nine to zero, to approve the rezoning. They also did hear a preliminary plat related to the 27 lots, and that is also moving forward. Are there some questions in terms of process here? Again, this is rezoning simply for this sliver of land, about 1.42 acres on the east side of the property. There is a final plat that will be before you, should it continue to go forward here with the next steps. But that would be the remainder of the process; that would be before the city council. So with that, I'll certainly stand for any questions.
Questions for Mr. Allen. Have I seen them?
Thank you.
Are there members of the public who wish to speak on this rezoning request?
Hello, my name's Julie O'Brien, and I live at 2975 West Princeton Avenue. I have no problem changing that from an RA1 to an R1. I think our biggest issue that will be happening is the development itself. Housing in there, we knew it was going to be coming, but when you look at what is currently there on Gooder, there's four existing homes, and their driveways back out. Princeton Valley is limited. It's a U shape. Everybody has to come out either on Gooder or on East Princeton. So you're adding more homes. Thank you. So you're going to be adding approximately six or seven more driveways here. La Salle is -- there's a stop sign here, and then everybody is going on La Salle onto McKinley. And then on this side, you're going to be adding either six to seven more homes and driveways. Then across here, it's going to be either 14 -- I figured, let's see, 16 to 14 driveways. And right now, I believe there is, um, let's see, if I can look at this a little better, one, two, three driveways that go onto La Salle, and the rest is some intersections of some streets. And now you're going to add anywhere from 16 to 14 homes backing out. That's a lot. And these lots are only 65 feet wide. And if you go look at the rest of the development in there, it's only been in the last couple of years, all of a sudden we're cramming these houses in next to each other. We have no need for that. Lots of 100 feet, 104 feet, you can put a nice-sized home. But the 65-foot, I mean, it's -- it doesn't make sense, because we have a lot of land here in this community, and to try to squeeze those in. And I am concerned about the traffic. I think everybody over in Princeton is. How are we going to get in and out? We're limited. We're kind of tucked in there. And those are our two main streets, and you're adding more cars backing out. A gentleman did say that it's only going to impact us at peak time with 30 cars. I don't know if that included Highclere. Highclere's there, too. So we have concerns about that. Let's see, what else were we talking about? And are these one-family homes, not condos? That was another question that somebody has brought up to me. Does anybody know the answer to that?
We can ask it all.
Okay. On the corner, there is a storm siren, and we fought hard to get that there, because a lot of us that live further up on the hill could never hear the siren. So where does that get moved? Who pays for that? Northwoods Elementary School is full. So I was on the registering and busing committee a couple of years ago. First comment that came up was, oh, we can just take all the kids that are over there, Jingle Court and Princeton, and bus them to Locust Lane. I fought hard not to have that happen, because we built where we did, because Northwoods is right there. So those are things to think about. We don't have a park. We don't have a green space over there. I've lived there since '93, and it had been promised to have a green space, a park. Can't use it under the power lines unless you want a shock. And the city had a little program there once, and they had picnic table there, and they had to pull it out and get an all-wooden one, because the legs of it was -- the kids were getting shocks. So we need a green space out there. We have no bus service out there, bike paths. We're concerned about the retention pond and the current ones that we have. Where I live at the far end, I watch the rain, and we've always -- we've made a joke about it. We have a river running down, and we thought, oh, we should get on inner tubes and go right down. So changing the retention ponds, because the ones that we currently have out there, the smaller ones along the condos, have overflowed, and they have issues with those. So we want to make sure this is done properly and not -- we have no reason to put that many houses onto this area. He's done a good job on the rest of Princeton, having nice spacious lots, but putting 27 there with those two especially being main streets for us to get in and out of is too many. And I think that's something, too, for all of you to consider when this development proceeds further.
I see that your five minutes has expired, Ms. O'Brien.
Okay.
But I will see if there are questions, and --
Okay, thank you.
Any questions of this -- is that a yes or a no?
Yes.
Ms. O'Brien, Councilmember Strobel has a question for you.
Thank you, Ms. O'Brien. You're aware that we're only looking at the rezoning today, so the site -- I think you're getting -- it's good to get ahead of an issue, and I think you're doing that tonight. I think, you know, be aware that it'll be going back to Plan Commission for a lot of these items that you're talking about, and I think after the site plan and the general development plan, then it'll come back to us as well, my understanding, so.
It will go back to them, but we just wanted to make sure that you're aware that we don't oppose the changing. It's just what's happening, and that the Hasselwonder Company does know that, too. So thank you for your time. Anybody else?
That's it, and thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Would anyone else like to speak tonight?
Hi, my name is Janet Fraze, and I live at 2516 East Princeton Avenue. And my husband and I live in a condo, which is a duplex condo, and there are several in that area. And we overlook the golf course, so the golf course is kind of our backyard. And I agree very much with Julie O'Brien that we are not opposed to this rezoning issue at all. It has to go, you know, there is city sewer and water out there that can handle this. I don't consider this a low-density development, though, and that's how it came out of the Planning Commission, low-density development. Now, our condo lot is really the only condo on the golf course that has a retention pond between us and the condo next to us, the two buildings. That retention pond is on golf course property, but it's like our backyard. It's very close, and it's only like four feet from a stand of very large pine trees. So four feet out, there's a retention pond. With this kind of development in that small of an area, I know that Neil Hasselwonder Properties has a very large area there where he can do water retention from runoff, but I want to point out that when you put this many houses, you also have -- you have all this impervious surfaces. And I've dealt with impervious surfaces with lake issues in Chippewa County, but driveways, rooftops, sidewalks, everything that we have when we build homes and develop neighborhoods, those are all impervious surfaces. They don't absorb anything. So you have a tremendous amount of runoff. It's an environmental issue. I'm just asking. Our retention pond, when we moved in in 2009, was really quite pretty. It one time did overflow with a heavy rainfall. There's so much rain. There's some kind of a holding area. It popped, blew off the cover, was like a little waterspout, and then that all drains down further at the back of what is the driving range behind our pine trees. But that all drives -- drains towards this area, which is still a bit of a distance, but it drains towards the area that is being developed. The area right now, when it's wet, it's a mosquito breeder. You have to face that. Whatever kind of water retention area that you approve for this area is going to -- when it's wet, when there's water in there, it's going to be a mosquito breeder. When it's dry, you get all this growth that's really quite ugly. It's not very attractive. So that doesn't add to the neighborhood. So I just would ask that, as this development goes forward -- oh, the one other thing I wanted to say was, this area is so unusual. When we first moved in, my son-in-law, who's 50-years-old, came in, and he was going to -- it's like a volcanic caldera. It's really quite beautiful, because this is kind of a horseshoe neighborhood that goes around the golf course, and it's surrounded by hills. It's beautiful. And Neil has developed that whole horseshoe area just beautifully, with wonderful homes and a very nice neighborhood. Bigger lots, more expensive homes. But our only way in and out, it's not the only way, there is a secondary, our only way out is along La Salle, where those 27 homes are going, and then out to McKinley and the north crossing. That's it. If you don't go that way, you can't go into that area and go up, and there's no way out. The only other way is to go east on La Salle, and then you go up north to a hill. You take what's a very narrow bridge across Highway 53. You go up to, you know, east still on the other side of Highway 53. I can't even -- I don't even know the name of that street, or is it Peterson? Peterson? Peterson. And then you go up to where there's a gas station, and then you have to go around and make a circling and out. That's our own -- there's two ways in and out of that neighborhood. And this very much affects that one direction in and out of our entire neighborhood. So look at the density of housing that's already there. This is a little more complicated than what it just looks like flat on paper.
Thank you, Ms. Fraze. I see that Councilmember Worthman has a question.
Thank you, and thanks for coming down tonight. Just so I can clarify, the retention pond, is that in the area slated for redevelopment?
Well, Neil has, with the golf course, he has ponds that carry the water. But with the heavy rain, the one I talked about, where our retention pond, it has some kind of piping that comes in there, and then there's some kind of holding area, and that filled and then just spouted. And then it overflows, and it just kind of spreads out over a very large area, which is at the -- let's see, that would be the east end of what's kind of like the driving range of the golf course. The only thing is, so that retention pond is -- I wish I could --
It's in that area, though? I was just trying to clarify. It's in that?
Well, his new development has an area at the back of it that can be retention pond.
Pick your house up there.
I see.
Yeah, see, the topography there is quite interesting. But there already is -- the neighborhood, the neighbors walk through there, because there's a lot of trees in there. It's quite beautiful, lots of birds and lots of trees.
Thank you.
There's a shortcut through, but there is a ditch that's there now, and then separate ones with the golf course and with the condos.
Thank you, Ms. Fraze. I see no further questions. Anyone else? Yes.
My name is Neil F. Hasselwonder. I live at 3705 Freedom Drive in Eau Claire, which is up on top of the hill in Princeton Valley. And I'm here to more or less let the councilmen ask me any questions that they may have on the development. I'll give you a little background on the three streets that border the development If you look at the map on Gooder Street, which is on our left, and the street on the right is East Princeton, and the longest street, which is on the south, is La Salle Street. As these streets were put in and developed over the years, the improvements were put into the property adjoining them on Gooder on the east side, on Princeton, on East Princeton, also on the east side, and on La Salle Street on the north side. So the sewer, the water, curb and gutter, has been put in, planning for the development of this neighborhood. And with the approval, of course, the city staff as the -- city staff and city council as the improvements went in. The stormwater was done way back in the Vern Miller days. Vern designed that stormwater detention pond, as you see the closeness of the topography lines in the map, in the back lot lines of where these lots are. The density, we can speak about density for a little bit. The condos, for example, that my good friend, Mrs. Frye, lives in, are about 100 feet wide, and we've got two residences on those lots. So in a sense, we got one resident per 50 feet. And I'm not up here to get an argument going with Mrs. Frye, because they're great salesmen of Princeton Valley. They love it there, and of course, all of us do. I don't think the density is too much. I think the stormwater, we've taken care of. The area has become kind of a neighborhood since La Salle Street is -- it's kind of a gathering street, but it used to be kind of a main thoroughfare through the development. Now with the improvement in the north crossing, all the heavy traffic, and might say the fast traffic, it is out on the north crossing. So it's more of a residential neighborhood street. With that, I'll take any questions, if you have any.
Councilmember Bergy?
I was wondering if you have any plans. Ms. O'Brien brought up the park. Do you have any plans to make a park?
Don't have any immediate plans at this time, but we've got properties that we could consider.
Okay, thanks.
Mrs. Fraze brought up that there's some walking around this neighborhood. It sounds like a default park. Has developed for meandering and walking in the woods, for example?
One neat thing about Princeton Valley, and Mrs. Fraze spoke to it, with the valley kind of circling around, it's about a three-mile walk around on West Princeton and East Princeton and La Salle Street. So that gets used an awful lot for the neighborhood walking path.
Sounds nice. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Hassel -- oh, Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you. So I understand, just to reiterate again, we're talking tonight just about the zoning issue. And I know in the past, we've brought up the idea that developers would be working with the Planning Commission and might make some adjustments. Do you feel like you would be open to making some adjustments to the number of houses that were being built, or is this a pretty fixed idea that you have?
Well, there's a real need, we feel, for this size lot. And I can speak to that, because we built the houses that are on Concord Trail. We built the houses that are currently on Camden Court. And most of those houses are housing senior citizens. And what we're finding is senior citizens want to downsize. If they got a cabin up north, they want to leave She-Tech or Hayward and come to Eau Claire where there's health care, and they want something affordable. And when we build something on a lot of that size, we can keep it affordable. And we can do it -- and there's another thing that they want. They want something very nice. They just don't want a cheap house. They want a small house that's done up very well, with the same amenities that they were used to pretty much all their life. And so -- and then they also have had the time of probably a bigger cabin and a yard to take care of, and a yard to take care of probably here in Eau Claire. They don't want that anymore. They want a smaller place with a smaller yard that they can take care of, and this is kind of their last stop probably before they have to go to an extended care unit. So that's the kind of house that we've really found a real good need for. Just an example, we just sold a house to some people from Colorado Springs, whose daughter lives in Chippewa Falls. They moved here to be close to their daughter. They're 82-years-old. And they picked Eau Claire because of health care and affordability. So that need is out there. We're furnishing or supplying a need of housing for people to stay in their house until, like I say, they go to an extended care unit.
Thank you for sharing that vision. That helps me understand a bit better.
That's exactly why we're doing it, because the need is very much there.
Thank you.
Thank you again, Mr. Hasselwonder. Anyone else wanting to speak on this item?
Madam President, and to respond to Councilmember Strobel's comment before as well, just to clarify, it is -- this property is only moving forward with a final plat after this, so it is not part of a general development plan or site plan. So it'd just be a final plat after this. So just clarify process for everyone. Thank you.
Okay, with that, we'll close item one and bring our attention to item two, which is a public hearing on a resolution vacating a portion of Marston Avenue from Dodge to the east end. Mr. Gensko.
This item is a short section of Marston Avenue, located just on the hill up above here on the west side of Forest Hill Cemetery and pretty much at the south end of Dodge Street. This item started out as an inquiry as to clarify what the status of that right-of-way is, and now it's become a request for a vacation. The right-of-way was dedicated to a width of 66 feet, I'm zooming the right way on this, back in 1857 by the plat of Chapman and Thorpe's first edition. And at that time, it was named Randall Street, and since then has turned over and become This piece of right-of-way that we're talking about is highlighted in this light blue through here. It quit showing up on our -- the city's right-of-way maps about the time that Forest Hill Cemetery expanded up to this area. Forest Hill Cemetery was further north and then expanded to the south and to the west. But neither property on either side includes the right-of-way description, the vacated right-of-way, in their legal descriptions, and there's no record that it was ever vacated. However, you can see from the aerial that a fence was built in the middle, and the north half has been assimilated into the cemetery, and the south half is being used as the driveway back to the garage for this parcel. So it's already functioning as a right-of-way, or as a vacated right-of-way. There are no public utilities in there. There's actually a pretty good hill here, so there's really no chance that this would be extended or of any use to the cemetery. So it would not impact any current or future utility or transportation needs of the city. There will be a companion resolution go along with your council agenda item tomorrow to release the utility easements that are typically retained when a right-of-way is vacated. The request will be to release that as well, because there are no public utilities. The Plan Commission heard this item at their last Plan Commission meeting, and they did recommend to proceed with the vacation. So with that, if there's any questions?
Questions for Mr. Gensko. I see none. Thank you for the history lesson, too. Interesting. Anyone? No. Anyone here to speak on the vacation consideration, I guess? With that, we'll close item two and move into two public discussions for this evening, the first being a discussion on an ordinance amending the city code of ordinances relating to restaurants, sidewalk cart food vendors, and mobile food establishments operating within the city of Eau Claire. Ms. Stromberger.
Thank you. I was asked if my presentation would be short, sweet, and savory. Well, I can just promise, short. I don't do sweet and savory. So this license was first passed in 2016, and until a few weeks ago, there were no applicants for the license. So in March, staff had a listening session to look at why that might be the case, to explore reasons why it had not been obtained, and to look at lowering entry barriers into the food truck operation scene. So as a result of the listening session, staff made administrative changes to address concerns as to park accessibility for the food trucks as part of this license, and then also recommends the following changes that are in front of you today. So the changes create a 15-month license for new applicants if they apply between April 1 and June 30. And that will align city licenses with those that are issued by the Health Department. It also allows operation on a street for six hours instead of four, as it currently is. It adds Schlegel Milch Lot as a place available for operation under the license. It'll permit operations within 200 feet of a restaurant if all those restaurants within the 200 feet grant permission, and it lowers the license fee to $120 from $250. So with that, I can address any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Stromberger. Questions about this?
I have a question.
I guess we're trying to improve accessibility, so that seems like a good thing, too. Councilmember Bergy has a question.
I was wondering how this would fit into neighborhood block parties. Would that be just, I'm starting to promote that on the north side and -- Would that be, I'm starting to promote that on the north side, and I've been to two meetings last week, actually, and I brought up the block parties that the neighborhoods can do. And is it just as long as they follow these? Could there be a food truck or a sidewalk park at a block party? Or is there any restrictions?
A block party is typically in a residential area, and that's not permitted under the license unless a truck wanted to, and somebody wanted to host a truck, you know, in their driveway.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Councilmember Worthman?
Thank you, Council President. Ms. Schomberger, is the permission needed each year? How does that work? Do they have to go around to restaurants each year when they?
No, it would just be a standing permission essentially, you know, until the restaurant either changed ownership or was revoked by that person.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions? I see none.
Thank you.
And I see that there are a few members of the public who wish, might want to speak to this item. Anybody?
Good evening. My name is Lisa Aspenson. I live at 617 Third Avenue. I'm in the restaurant business, and I have some questions regarding this ordinance in the question of the city restaurant licensing fee. It's the same license fee as a restaurant pays. However, a license for a restaurant also has a dollar fee attached to it of how much money we're making on that license, which is what the Health Department deems how many times they need to inspect us and the size of our inspection. For example, Mona Lisa's at 428 Water Street. My total fees are $2,383. And 120 of that is my restaurant fee, and then my size, according to my dollar sales, is another $1,114. So the question I have is a food truck license that you want to take the fees and lower them. How is that dollar fee going to be compensated for the Health Department? If there's someone from the Health Department here to answer that question, or perhaps one of you could answer that question. The next question I have is on page 19, 5B. Schlegel Milch Parking Lot. I looked up the city parks on the city website, and under Parks, under S, it says Sundent Park, Sherman Neighborhood, and State Street, MacArthur Park. So I'd like to clarify with Steve Nick, the city attorney, how the Schlegel Milch Lot, parking lot, is deemed a city park? And how many other parking lots in the city could follow this ordinance if we're deeming the Schlegel Milch Lot a city park? The next one is six on page 19. Operation within 200 feet of a restaurant. I'd like to know the guidelines as to how this initiates getting in touch with a restaurant or what that is. And then bring your attention to number 11 on page 19. If the city has a business, for example Carson Park, and we're operating a ball game, you have to be 500 feet away from something that the city's retaining money on or at the city property. Why a restaurant of someone where we pay city fees, it's 200 feet? And in your own park, for example Carson Park, when you're doing vending, is 500 feet. And this was a question in the original ordinance, and it's a question again of why this has not been looked at. And that would be the end of my questions.
Questions for Ms. Aspenson. Councilmember Strobel?
Thank you, Ms. Aspenson. So in addition to your $120 fee, which is the same fee, you're also being charged with like a percent of sales? Is that, what is the formula for that, that they're using?
The formula is under and over $500,000. And that was a new code or a new fee set by the Health Department in the city of Eau Claire. It is actually more than the standards in Milwaukee or Madison to restaurants in the $5 million range versus our $500,000 range. And that's what we pay, or what the city, the Health Department deems of what it costs them, you know, in those fees to do our inspections. So I see if you're going to charge a food truck now 120 versus the 250, perhaps that 250 was kind of building in some money at least for them to recover for their inspections. I don't understand why they wouldn't charge them when I'm paying. My fee has doubled in the last year, as well as all the other restaurants in the city of Eau Claire.
Thank you.
I do see that our city staff was writing down your five questions, if I counted them right. It is our habit to answer them tomorrow if they're complicated, but I will ask Mr. Nick if there's an easy response, or let's see, a short or simple response you wish to offer, or do you wish to wait till tomorrow?
My response at this point would simply be its feedback, its commentary for council to take into consideration. They're all policy choices for city council to make, whether it's on setback distances or on what public property to open up. Particularly, Ms. Aspenson raised the issue of park, and it doesn't raise Schlegel Milch Lot to park status, it just lists a number of public properties that are being opened, including that one. And whether to open it or not is an issue before you and one that you can vote on tomorrow.
Thank you, Ms. Aspenson. Anyone else here to speak about our changes to the mobile food vendor ordinance, possibly? Okay, we'll close that item. The last item on our agenda tonight is a discussion on the 2018-202, 2022 Park Open Space and Recreation Facilities Plan. Mr. Peppinger?
Good evening.
Good evening.
The Park and Open Space Plan serves as a short-range element to the park plan. This plan was updated, this updates the 2013 to 2017 plan that is currently expired. We've been using that plan for planning our capital improvement projects that we do every year. This involves a comprehensive review of our parks and also our open spaces and our recreational facilities. Plan was repaired in conjunction with the goals and objectives and recommendations of the comp plan. This plan is a prerequisite for the eligibility for funding for various grant programs within the DNR. So it is a plan that we need, and the DNR requires us to have it if we're going to apply for grants. And we're doing a lot of that these days, so there's money there, and we're doing a good job on that. The classification system, the city has been traditionally using a classification of its parks and open spaces, using different categories. There's actually seven. We use six of those seven. I'll talk about that a little bit later. It is based on standards set by the National Recreation and Park Administration. We are a park and recreation that is an accredited agency, so it is important that we abide by those rules that are set forth by the National Recreation and Park Administration. This system dates back, all the way back to the early 1960s, so we've been doing this for a while. And it's really important because we do get a lot of people that have creative ideas that want to bring ideas for us to add to our parks, and sometimes we have to say no because some of those amenities they want to bring into a certain park, it just doesn't fit that criteria. So that's why we use those systems, and usually when we talk to the folks, they understand that. So again, this is a list of those standards and criteria. The one standard that we don't use is the playlot. Those are real small areas. But we do have a good assortment of the playground, or the neighborhood parks, the urban parks, community parks, special areas, community athletic fields, and also the waterways areas. Within the plan is an inventory. So we inventory all of the space that we have. And again, you can see on the list for the municipal part, we have those six criterias or classifications. The city has over 1,100 acres of parkland. That number actually came down a little bit, not by accident, it's that our technology has gotten a little bit better to where we lost a little bit of space in some areas. We also keep track of the Eau Claire School District, what they have in their areas for the neighborhood schools and also in the middle and high schools, and then the University of Wisconsin Eau Claire. Here's an update of some of the new areas that we added, that are highlighted in yellow. We actually added the Carson Park Causeway, .2 acres. With the expansion of the Causeway, we actually have some areas, that area there now, that people recreate. A lot of fishing going down on those areas that we've created. It's a beautiful area coming into the park. We also have 16.5 acres in the Cannery District, one acre for the Haymarket Plaza, about nine and a half acres for the North Side Dog Park that we're hoping to have done sometime this summer. And then the Keys Park area, which is down off of, south of town. We added that 90 acres to this plan. Additionally, on our trail segments, back in 2013 to 2017, we had 31.3 acres, or miles of trails. This year, in our inventory, we have over 34 miles of trails. So we've actually increased our trail segment by about three miles. City of Eau Claire has one of the most robust trail systems in the state. And from what I've heard before, I think we're second only to Madison in the number of miles of trails we have. In regards to projects, this plan addresses deficiency and needs. One question that comes up every year is how do we prioritize all the projects that we'd like to do? Because there's only so much money to go around. So what we find is that what needs the money the most to go to the project? We have some really exciting projects coming up in the near future that are already in the CIP, but we've got the Cannery District coming up, and we also have the area by the Confluence that we're going to be working on. It's based, again, as I said before, on the comprehensive plan, and we also look at trends and policies as it relates to this process. Some of the factors impacting the timing of projects, they include the availability of funding from the general fund, grant funding for particular projects. Again, we've been applying for several grants, been successful in many. The timing of other capital and projects, again, there's only so much money to go around for the projects. And then the timing and availability of private fundraising. Many of our projects, I'll talk about some of the upcoming projects and also some of the completed projects that we have had in the past. A lot of those, you'll be surprised, that have included the public-private partnerships in making these projects happen. Also, changes in recreational demands and needs. Back in the early 80s, adult softball was a big thing in the city of Eau Claire. We don't see much of that. But now what we see today, pickleball. 30 years ago, nobody even knew what pickleball was. I'm not even sure if it was even invented. But now we have a big demand for that, and we're trying to meet that. So we have to be looking at what are those sports that are going to be coming up in the future. The opportunities to consolidate forbidding of projects and materials, again, if we have other projects going on that can benefit to get a job done cheaper, we'll look at that. And then also the priority and completion timeframe for these projects are evaluated each year on these factors. Some of the proposed projects that we'll be looking at in the next one, again, this is just a few of them. I didn't have time to put them all here, but I thought I'd give you a little bit of an idea of what's coming up. Boyd Park, to construct a skate plaza. Again, this is a public-private partnership. This council approved a fundraising effort by this group, and last I talked to them, which was just last week, they're more than 50% to their goal, so they're moving along there. Carson Park upgrades at the baseball park. Again, that's a public-private partnership. Ferry Street, to develop a boat launch and dog park. We're in the design phase of that project right now. Forest Street, constructing a veterans' tribute trail. Again, another public-private partnership. Group is planning to raise over $2 million to put this in for the city. The Hobbs Ice Arena, replacing the floor at Accravick Rank. Again, there's some needs there. We have to replace that, so that came up. McDonough Park, construct active aging amenities plus other amenities there. Again, this is a public-private partnership, something that the council approved just a few months ago on that. The Northwest Community Park, we'll be looking at constructing a parking lot, a restroom, a pavilion in that park. Now that we have access to that area, we'll be moving along on that in the coming years. Sundet Park, constructing the North Side Dog Park. As I said before, our hope is to have that done sometime this summer. We also look at conditions and trends in the community. Demand is expected to increase. We know that. We see that with our special events. The special events in the city and involvement in our park is soaring right now. We have so many. If you're around on the weekends, you know what I'm talking about. You see a lot of activity. Competition for tax dollars with the city will continue to increase, needing more public-private partnerships. We're going to continue to work on that, along with interagency agreements. Eau Claire's population is expected to grow at about 1% annually. Commercial and residential growth annexations are expected to occur, and there's a greater emphasis to improve the city's older neighborhoods. Enrollment at CVTC and UW Eau Claire will remain steady. Downtown redevelopment and growth expected to continue in the North Barstone, Phoenix Park areas. Tourism will continue to grow, drawing more large numbers and creating demand for our facilities. Senior citizen population will continue to increase as the baby boomers retire, and the number of people with the ability to pay or not pay will increase, which will need to have our ability to provide those services to both those groups. Some of the completed projects that we had with the 2013-2017 plan, the Carson Park, we replaced the main playground equipment and causeway. We will soon be having a ribbon cutting on that, something will be coming out to you soon on the playground equipment. And of course, the Causeway project was a ribbon cutting that we had last year. Fairfax Park and Pool, the Fairfax Park constructed two new dugouts, and that was done through an agreement with the school district, that they actually paid for that. All the materials and labor were paid through that group. And then we also added play features, slides and shade structures at the pool. Hobbs Ice Arena, we installed new dashboards on the O'Brien Rank. Jeffers Road Fields, we constructed new baseball and softball fields and the Miracle League Field, all under a public-private partnership with groups that raised over $1 million to put those facilities in. Just recently, we had the Goodwill Industries come in, and it was over $1 million that they contributed to the city to put that field in. Along with the Fury Girls softball and the Eau Claire National Little League, they provided the same type of funding for those fields up there. And Lake Shore Park, constructed a fishing pier and skate plaza. Money from the Public Spirit Fund was provided to pay for the fishing pier at Half Moon Lake there by Lake Shore. Some additional projects were completed. McDonough Park, we constructed six additional pickleball courts. Again, public-private partnership, money for that. Owen Park, we installed new park signs. Phoenix Park, installed the new electrical Phoenix Park, installed the new electrical service to the central portion of the park. There was a great need there for special events that we have at the park, so we needed to have an electrical service there. Pinehurst Park, we improved the sledding, skating and snowboarding facilities. Again, all with an agreement and a public-private partnership that we've been working with. And then, of course, our trails, we have a robust trail system, but just like our streets, they need assistance sometimes for resurfacing, so we're applying for grants to resurface. And we've been doing that also. We resurfaced some of our trails during this 2013-2017 completed projects. The Waterways and Parks Commission recommended approval at their April 25 meeting with conditions to add the following projects. They'd like, they add, and we did add these to our draft plan, completion of the history walk markers in Phoenix Park, consideration of a community gardens at Boyd and Cameron Parks, and consideration of developing smaller-scale dog parks within the vicinity of downtown. The Plan Commission recommended approval at their May 14 meeting with conditions to add the following project wording change. Owen Park, regarding land acquisition on the west side of First Avenue to include parking and open space. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions in my hand.
Questions for Mr. Peppinger. Councilmember Worthman?
Thank you, Council President. Mr. Peppinger, thanks for all your work on this, I know it's a lot. And I just wanted to follow up on a couple of questions. The first being the dog park, this idea of smaller community dog parks. My recollection in the Waterways and Parks Commission was that we had looked at two specific parks as possibilities, not necessarily studying the idea of it. Was that, I guess I'm trying to get a sense for whether it might make sense to revert back to that idea of looking at specific parks, or whether studying the idea of it is going to, is that, how do we push it up on the priority list, I guess is what I'm asking?
Well, we have talked about, with the recommendation to look at this, we have been doing that already with some of these smaller urban areas that we would, we would develop such a, such a dog park within the, I guess, it's more of a residential area, but in the downtown area. We're looking at Cappas Park. I think we discussed that a little bit at our Waterways and Parks Commission meeting, that would be an idea that we'd look at. The other options that were discussed, if my recollection is correct, was looking at some of the smaller areas that people have seen. Many of those have been on private property, not on public property. And we would be looking at public property type of venues for this. So, I mean, there are opportunities. Certainly, we're looking at some of the smaller areas that, again, we call more of an urban park, so they're not large in size, but perhaps have the ability to function as an off-leash type of facility.
So, if I may follow up, the discussion was, I think, Cappas Park and the other one was Archery Park, potentially. So, here it says, study the feasibility of developing these, and I guess what I'm asking is if we actually spell out two opportunities and put that in the proposed projects list, does that move it up? Or do you feel like that this allows us to look at more options beyond those two? I guess I'm just trying to encourage that it's a higher priority. Do you see what I'm saying?
I do understand, I mean, I think, I think the issue of studying, studying the feasibility versus doing a project and getting it done type of project is what your question is. We could change that wording if that would be, would be something you'd be looking at. But I would, I would say that both would have the same effect. I mean, we're going to look at it, we, again, we look at prioritizing what is, is most immediate need for that we see in the park system. Again, we've got several new parks that will be coming online here soon, especially with the Cannery District, and we've got, over by the Confluence, so we are, you know, there are things that, and then, as I mentioned before, we got the Northwest Community Park, again, another park that is, that is coming to where we will have the ability to start putting amenities into those parks.
Thank you.
I'm Rick Kristofferson.
Thank you. Mr. Peppinger, as I read through that report, how, that was just stunning, and makes me so proud of Eau Claire and what we have to offer and what we have protected. One of the questions that came to me as I read through that is, at what point, or how do we as a city balance the development and the protection and expansion against the maintenance and the staff that it costs to mow and take care of those?
Well, that's a great question. First, what I'd like to do is mention that we had significant help with our friends from community development. Pat Ivory was a great help on this, and along with the staff, my staff in Parks and Recreation that gave a great effort to, you know, we studied this for five months before this came out, and so we really looked at this. We wanted to make sure that we had what we needed, what were the immediate needs. In regards to operation, yes, it does create, when we add new amenities to the parks, is that it creates more for us to do and to spread around. What we've been doing in community services is that we've been cross-training our employees to be able to do each other's jobs. Perhaps not being the expert arborist or horticulturist, but someone that can actually help fill in to meet the needs of our customers when they come to one of our parks, we want to make sure that they're well-manicured and that they're ready. If someone is renting a pavilion for the evening, we want to make sure it's clean. If there's restrooms, we want to make sure that they're stocked and clean for them. So, it is a challenge, I'm not going to say it isn't, but we have a great work crew that does a great job in making sure, and they're dedicated to it. Being a public servant is one of those things I've always said, it's the highest honor that we could ask for, is because you're helping your fellow citizen.
Could I ask a follow-up? When you develop public-private partnerships, are there, well, I'm sure there's all kinds of liabilities that prevent this, but inviting people to mow or some of the neighborhood parks, is that kind of thing invited?
We don't invite it, but one thing that we have been doing, if you notice when we bring these agreements forth, was that we do include a maintenance clause in there that they would provide money in the form of if something was broken or was needed, that we would have that funding, so it doesn't come from the city taxpayer money or the general fund.
Councilmember Stroh.
Thank you, Mr. Peppinger. Really nice report, very comprehensive, and I think one of the things that I see in here that seems really, really promising and really nice is all the public-private partnerships that you mentioned there. There's quite a, quite a list of those, and I think that allows the city of Eau Claire to get a lot better facilities, and I think we're really fortunate that people step up and contribute to those, so I think that's really positive. And then I did have a question, I just want to follow up on Councilmember Worthman's question on the dog parks, see if my memory is any good. It seemed to me that we were funding the facility improvements for the new dog park on Sundet with proceeds from the other dog park. Was that, was that correct?
That is correct, 100%.
Okay, so, so then, I guess, in answer, or maybe as a thought, it's maybe not quite so important what's going on at some of these other parks, if you now have two dog parks, there's a possibility of the funding being potentially doubled for adding the next ones. You know, it might go a little quicker, and it doesn't necessarily have to be tied totally to the CIP. Would that be correct?
Correct. The one thing that, by adding, you know, right now we've got one dog park, we're going to be adding another dog park this year, and then another dog park next year. At some point, my hope is everybody buys a, their fee and pays their fee. We do, there's complaints that we get sometimes that people don't buy their tags and make sure that they have the fees for the dog park. But I know there's a need out there, we're hearing it. So, when the next two dog parks get in by next year, our hope is that we're going to have three dog parks. Again, with Ms. Kristofferson's, Councilmember Kristofferson's question, that also increases our maintenance requirement to take care of those parks.
Councilmember Berg.
Thank you. I just had a question again about Princeton Valley. I looked at the comprehensive plan online, and I don't know if, I just looked it up through 2017, I think was the only one online, so maybe there's a newer one out there, but, or through 2018. But there was a park in Princeton Valley on the comprehensive plan, and then on now this park plan, which is wonderful, I agree with everyone was saying, there is no park in Princeton Valley allotted for on the map that was in the packet. And so, I know things change, but then as we hear there is going to be more development, twenty-seven more houses, so just wondering if, I guess, why was the park removed from Princeton Valley, the plan, unless I'm not understanding it correctly? And then, with the proposed development, would there be, would that be able to move back into the priorities? For, there isn't a park up there within a half mile, again, as the city kind of has that goal. It's over a mile really to any park, so, again, with the increased housing, so. Thanks.
Yes. We do have, as part of one of our projects in Princeton Valley, it says to acquire property for park space and land. That's on page 34.
But there isn't one on the map?
No, there isn't one on the map because it isn't, it's not a park. It was a green space that we had, or a green way, it wasn't actually owned by the city of Eau Claire. But it somewhat acted like that. I know exactly where you're talking about, as you go in, and it's on the, on the left, yeah. So, but again, that wasn't, that wasn't owned by the city of Eau Claire. But I'm encouraged with what Mr. Hazewonder has said, both at the Plan Commission and here tonight, that he's possibly has some land that may be suitable for such a, such an area.
Councilmember Gregg.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you, Mr. Peppinger and Mr. Ivory as well for your work on this document. And as I serve on the Plan Commission, I read it a week ago as well, and, you know, it keeps churning more ideas, and I, I'm sure those in the public who have read it as well, you know, are thinking about and dreaming about different ideas too. And I guess my broad question maybe is that, you know, if people have an idea, whether it be a colleague on the city council here, or if it's someone in the public, what is, I understand that this is a five-year outlook, and there are other plans that inform this, and so, you know, is it, is it something that we can, we can, you know, new ideas can come forward before tomorrow, I guess, and, or like tweaking some of the language here, but if someone has an idea that maybe is a little bit too big, or they feel is a little too big for this document, there's other planning efforts ahead that people could plug into, and maybe you could talk a little bit about how someone could get either an idea in here or in a future plan?
Sure, sure. In reference to what we talked about earlier, there will be, besides this, is that we'll be looking at a smaller undertaking in 2020 with the city comp plan that could put such a, an idea, if so being. But then in 2025, when the comp plan is looked at as a major update, then that would be another undertaking that could be taken. This would be, this plan here, again, would be up again in 2023. 2022 is when it expires, but we typically look at it in that spring of that 2023.
Councilmember Worthman.
Thank you, Council President. Mr. Peppinger, one of the things that I saw here is canoe launch from the Galloway Street Open Space, says where the city brush site is along Galloway. Where is that exactly?
Good question. That was the old brush site that we had on Galloway, that now is an area green space on the, would be on the southeast quadrant of where Galloway and Burt Street and River Prairie Drive, and there's another, it's the, so it's on that southeast quadrant, but that's where the old brush site used to be until, I would say it would have been late 90s, early 2000s.
That's the area that we recently put out for potential development?
That would, well, again, we have a trail that is earmarked for that area, and again, that would be an area that we could look at putting a canoe launch. Now, I would probably say, looking at that, because Altoona already put one in up and off their Prairie River Drive, just upstream from there, it might not be the best place to put in an area right there. But that was a project that we had on for, as a future project, as a potential.
Thank you.
Councilmember Gregg.
Thank you, Council President. Mr. Peppinger, I had a specific question that kind of came up. Reading through this again, on page 31, there's reference to Demler Park, which is in my neighborhood, and there are two different items on there. One of them, it says, just simply three words, it says, "Improve parking surface." And I realize that there's a lot of brevity in this plan to try to, to not necessarily flesh it out too much, but I'm not really aware of like a parking area in Demler Park in the third ward there, so I guess what does it mean to improve a parking surface, and what exactly is considered the surface that exists today?
Well, I believe what you have there is more of a gravel dirt area for that area, so improving that would be, improving it with some type of bituminous type of surface that would, similar to what you see in other neighborhood parks.
Okay. So it's more of like a driveway thing, is my understanding, to access the park shelter and maybe be able to park one vehicle to load and unload, and that's the area you're referring to?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I see no further questions. Anyone in the public came to, did, is in the audience tonight to comment on the open park space plan? Seeing no one, the chair will close the last item of our agenda, which brings our public meeting to a close. And on a motion by Councilmember Weld, seconded by Councilmember Beaton, we adjourn without objection.
The Eau Claire City Council meeting will return in a moment. Newsworks is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, please contact us via phone at 715-839-5067, or online at valleymediaworks.org. This program is simulcast on WRFPLP 101.9 FM. We now return you to the Eau Claire City Council meeting.
This meeting of the Eau Claire City Council will come to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson.
I hear.
Beaton.
Here.
Bergy.
Here.
Kristofferson.
Here.
Emmanuel.
Here.
Greggert.
Here.
Kincaid.
Here.
Strobel.
Here.
Weld.
Here.
Worthman.
Here.
Zhang.
Here.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk, and welcome everyone to the Tuesday, May 22nd session, legislative session of the Eau Claire City Council. Well, we welcome citizens who are joining us tonight and are grateful to Valley Media Works for broadcasting and streaming these proceedings for people who cannot attend in person. If you wish to visit their website, the website is valleymediaworks.org. You can catch a live streaming there, I believe. You can catch a live streaming there, I believe. Council does have important items on our agenda this afternoon, so let us begin with our work, which starts with the consent agenda. Do council members have questions or wish to remove an item for separate consideration? Seeing no such desire, on a motion by Councilmember Worthman, seconded by Councilmember Gregert, the consent agenda is moved and discussion is in order. And there being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Beaton.
Aye.
Bergy.
Aye.
Christopherson.
Aye.
Emanuel.
Aye.
Gregert.
Aye.
Kincaid.
Aye.
Strobel.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
Worthman.
Aye.
Jean.
Aye.
And the consent agenda is passed. I have two proclamations this afternoon before we get on with our business agenda, and would invite Mr. Kirk Jensen to meet me at the podium. We have a little staging to do, so, but we're pretty good at it now. Mr. Jensen, today I'm going to help the city think about, through this proclamation, think about the growing importance of bicycle and pedestrian transportation as an alternative mode of transportation in our city. For some time, we've had a Bicycle Advisory, Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, and they do help the city council with your expertise and feed us new ideas, and your work is much appreciated, so. First, we have a proclamation that goes like the following. The City of Eau Claire Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee is promoting greater public awareness of the benefits of bicycling to encourage more people to use their bicycles and leave their vehicles at home. And the City of Eau Claire is designated as a bicycle-friendly community in 2011 and 2015 by the League of American Bicyclists at the bronze level. And it is important to educate both cyclists and motorists regarding the proper operation of bicycles on city streets. And bicycle commuting is an effective means to improve air quality, reduce traffic and noise, conserve energy, and encourage a healthier lifestyle. And under state law and city regulations, bicycles are vehicles, and bicyclists enjoy many of the same rights, privileges, and obligations of motorists to use the public roads. Therefore, the city council does proclaim the week of June 2nd through June 9th as Wisconsin Bike Week in the City of Eau Claire, and encourage residents of the city to get out and ride their bicycles. Mr. Jensen.
Good afternoon, council members. Thank you for taking time to draw attention to the upcoming Eau Claire Bike Week. Notable events include group mountain bike rides and a road ride, bike maintenance courses, and city bike rides to the Summer Concert Series and an Eau Claire Express game, as well as an educational ride to visit many of the city's historic bridges. Public input will be taken on the three-county bike and pedestrian plan on Wednesday, June 6th, and there will be a kickoff party starting at 6:30 a.m. at Volume 1 on Tuesday, June 5th. Coffee will be served. Members of BPAC will be attending these events, and we'd love to see you in the saddle for a ride or two. BPAC is continuing its work this year on a range of projects, such as updating the Bike and Pedestrian Plan, drafting a citywide complete streets policy, and educational activities like creating school-specific Safe Routes to School literature for students attending public schools across the district. It has lent its support and finances to exciting new projects in the area. There will soon be three bicycle corrals in the city, two along Water Street and one on Graham Avenue. Thanks again for recognizing Bike Week, and I hope to stop at a crosswalk for you in the near future.
And likewise. Thank you so much. Next, I'd like to invite Mr. Tom Larson to the podium, the president of the Community Foundation. Is that the right title?
Just a trustee, thank you.
Oh. Well, I just promoted you, I guess. So I have a proclamation to read about this important week and the important work that your foundation does. And your, the foundation helped us with this PowerPoint also, that people can watch. So whereas throughout our nation's history, individual Americans have voluntarily joined together to meet important needs in their communities, and this willingness to work together toward a common goal is a hallmark of the American character. And private voluntary associations across the country make substantial contributions to our nation's well-being. And community foundations provide effective leadership in communities throughout the United States, often supplementing or assisting in the coordination of public programs, and are one of the fastest-growing forms of philanthropy in the United States. And for over 20 years, the Eau Claire Community Foundation has served as a bridge connecting donors with charities in order to improve our quality of life, and as a tax-exempt public charity created by and for the Eau Claire community. The ECCF has for 20 years established endowments that are invested to provide long-term support for local charities and purposes. People do not give to the Eau Claire Community Foundation, they give through it. And the ECCF works to strengthen our community by offering donors opportunities to establish charitable legacy, making grants, and serving as a catalyst to address identified community needs. The Community Foundation has been shaped by an innovative Board of Trustees and their leadership and staff, who still are guided by the dream of the original founders. Now, therefore, the city council does proclaim the community's appreciation for 20 years of service of the Eau Claire Community Foundation, and call upon all the people of Eau Claire to celebrate philanthropy, improving the quality of life for individuals and families. Mr. Larson.
Thank you. President Kincaid, members of council, on behalf of the Eau Claire Community Foundation, its founding trustee, Dick Larson, who's with me today, and our other trustees, thank you for this proclamation. As many of you know, the Eau Claire Community Foundation is a bridge that connects donors to nonprofits. Donors contribute to the foundation, and many establish a family fund. The foundation invests those dollars and assists in distributing grants to support the donors' philanthropic goals. Since establishment of the foundation, the foundation has awarded over $11.2 million in grants, and currently holds over 260 charitable funds. In 2017, the foundation was proud to announce the opening of 17 new funds, adding over $1.8 million in new assets, and surpassing the foundation's goal of holding $20 million in assets by its 20th anniversary. In 2018, year-to-date, the foundation has opened six new funds and is on its way to reaching the foundation's goal of holding $25 million by its 25th anniversary. Thank you for the City of Eau Claire's support and for all you do for our community. Thank you.
We will continue our work then of the afternoon by opening up our business agenda with item number 16, a resolution granting a permanent expansion of a Class Combination B liquor and fermented malt beverage license to the VFW. Ms. Stromberger.
Thank you. So this is a combination Class B license, it's your typical full liquor license, it's the license that's held by a tavern for consumption on premise. So this application is for an expanded patio, they're looking at adding an 1,100-square-foot deck. As part of the expansion, they're going to relocate the smoking jack that's there, and they will remove the sides of that structure to be compatible with state law regarding smoking. The license review had no concerns about this application, and the applicant is here if you do have any questions for him.
Questions for Ms. Stromberger or the applicant? I see none, thank you. Down a motion then by Councilmember Bergy, seconded by Councilmember Christopherson, item 16 is moved. Discussion? And there being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Beaton.
Aye.
Bergy.
Aye.
Christopherson.
Aye.
Emanuel.
Aye.
Gregert.
Aye.
Kincaid.
Aye.
Strobel.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
Worthman.
Aye.
Jean.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
And that resolution passes. Item 17 is a resolution granting a combination Class A intoxicating liquor and fermented malt beverage to Gordy's Market at 1031 Clermont Avenue. Ms. Stromberger.
Thank you. So a combination Class A license, in contrast to the B license that you just approved, is for carryout sales only, there's no consumption on premises permitted with that type of license. So this application is to reopen the location at 1031 West Clermont this summer, following a remodel of the store. Gordy's has a zero-tolerance policy for any sales to those underage. Any employee who would have made that sale is immediately terminated, which is a policy the police department is fully supportive of. And the police department noted no past problems with any underage sales at Gordy's locations, and the license review committee had no concerns about this application. And the applicant is here if you do have any questions for him as well.
Questions for Ms. Stromberger? Councilmember Jean.
Thank you. I just have a quick question. It is a transfer license, or just like a, it's a new license?
It's a new license.
Okay. So they apply a new license, not transferring?
Correct.
Thank you.
And I see no further questions. Thank you. On a motion by Councilmember Strobel, seconded by Councilmember Anderson, item 17 is moved and discussion is in order. There being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Bergy.
Aye.
Christopherson.
Aye.
Emanuel.
Aye.
Gregert.
Aye.
Kincaid.
Aye.
Strobel.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
Worthman.
Aye.
Jean.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Beaton.
Aye.
Bergy.
Aye.
Christopherson.
Aye.
Emanuel.
Aye.
And that resolution passes. Item 18, we move on to another topic with a resolution vacating a portion of Marston Avenue from Dodge Street to the East End. Mr. Jensenko made a presentation last evening. Questions by council from that presentation? On a motion then by Councilmember Emanuel, seconded by Councilmember Weld, item 18 is moved and discussion is in order. And there being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Christopherson.
Aye.
Emanuel.
Aye.
Gregert.
Aye.
Kincaid.
Aye.
Strobel.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
Worthman.
Aye.
Jean.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Beaton.
Aye.
Bergy.
Aye.
And that resolution passes. Our related item is a resolution releasing the utility easements within Marston Avenue, just vacated by the city council. Do council members have questions about utility easements? Mr. Jensenko went over it a little bit last evening, but if you have questions, I don't see any. And on a motion by Councilmember Beaton, is that, is that right? Yeah. Seconded by Councilmember Jean, item 19 is moved. Discussion? And there being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Emanuel.
Aye.
Gregert.
Aye.
Kincaid.
Aye.
Strobel.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
Worthman.
Aye.
Jean.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Beaton.
Aye.
Bergy.
Aye.
Christopherson.
Aye.
And that resolution passes. Item 20 is a resolution approving a memorandum of understanding between the City of Eau Claire and the University of Wisconsin Eau Claire for a cooperative use of each other's facilities. Not all facilities, but some, three in particular.
Yes, good afternoon. Before the city council is a memorandum of understanding by and between the City of Eau Claire and the University of Wisconsin Eau Claire. This MOU outlines the cooperative use of Carson Park Football, Hobbs Ice Arena, and the Bowlinger Fields. While the city and UW Eau Claire have been working together in using these facilities for many years, this MOU puts in this agreement of the language and understanding for both to follow for the next 10 years. Again, we've been using these facilities cooperatively, and we've been doing this without an agreement. We put basically this into writing now. This memo of understanding includes the responsibilities of the city, the University of Wisconsin Eau Claire, scheduling priorities, billing, cleaning, and terms of the agreement. The city and the university have a long history of working cooperatively together for the good of the community and each other, finds it mutually in the best interest to document the use of each facility, and finds it benefits the community as a whole when the city and the university work cooperatively together. Mr. Mike Rindoe from the University of Wisconsin Eau Claire is here to answer any questions, and of course, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have to.
Questions for Mr. Pipinger. Does Mr. Rindoe want to make any comments?
Yes, I think he does.
It looks like he does.
Good afternoon. I would just echo what Mr. Pipinger just said, and I thank him and Don Comte for the work that they did, along with our staff at the university, to formalize this longstanding partnership between the university and the city for the use of these facilities. It's in the best interest of the university to have facilities that are available to us that we don't own and operate, and I think it's the same for the city with Bowlinger Fields in this case. So it's a great, it's a great opportunity for us to work together to accomplish more than we can alone, and we're very grateful to have this 10-year agreement going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Rindoe. Thank you very much for everything. Any other questions or any questions? Councilmember Christopherson.
Madam President, thank you. I simply want to say as a new council member that having this MOU presented publicly really allows the community to realize the extent to which there is collaboration between the university and the city. I think that it speaks to the relationship, and it speaks to the benefits that we gain from that kind of relationship, and I want to say thank you.
Thank you. And on a motion then by Councilmember Worthman, seconded by Councilmember Gregert, item 20 is moved and discussion is in order. And there being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gregert.
Aye.
Kincaid.
Aye.
Strobel.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
Worthman.
Aye.
Jean.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Beaton.
Aye.
Bergy.
Aye.
Christopherson.
Aye.
Emanuel.
Aye.
And that resolution passes. See you in 2028, I guess. Lord willing and all that stuff. Item 21 is a resolution authorizing the execution of a Department of Natural Resources Principal For Given Financial Assistance Agreement with the Safe Drinking Water Loan Program. Ms. Adams.
Good afternoon, and thank you. The Eau Claire Department, the City of Eau Claire Department of Community Services Utilities Division would like to offer financial assistance to city residents for replacement of their private lead service lines. Through this agreement, the Department of Natural Resources, under the State of Wisconsin's Safe Drinking Water Loan Program, would provide $300,000 in funding for the lead pipe replacements. You may recall, last year in April, the council approved $500,000 grant funds offered by the same program, and prior, at that time, the reimbursement rate was $1,000, but the city decided to change it to $2,000, with going back to all the people who had already requested reimbursement, so they would get either $2,000 or up to the amount that they actually paid for their service replacement. Currently, we have paid out 20, 29 homeowners who had requested reimbursement for lead for lead service line replacement and the average cost is two thousand sixty-nine dollars.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Might be a couple of questions? Is that your line? No?
Yes.
It's hard to see that one. No, thank you. Councilmember Strobel.
Thank you. Ms. Adams, tell me how the public has received this and what your success has been when you, my understanding is this is mainly an opportunity when we're doing those streets for those people that have lead service lines. Have all the homeowners been using this to replace their lead service lines or have you, have you not had a lot of success with it? Twenty-nine doesn't seem like a lot, but...
It's not. Jeff? I'm gonna have Jeff answer that.
It's a good question. Honestly, the program hasn't gone as well as we had hoped. We are putting out a new initiative to where city staff is going to go out and find these lead service lines. Of course, the difficult part is it has to qualify because we have to have our side replaced before we can replace the private side. So we're going back in the records from years that we've replaced nineteen twenties, nineteen thirties water main with some assistance from our engineering department and we're gonna go out there and do a community sweep of these properties to make sure that if they have a lead service line, that they take advantage of our program while the money's still there.
Which makes a lot of sense and I guess I, I'm not necessarily for, well, let me just ask the question. Is there any thought or intention of maybe requiring the lead service lines be replaced upon street reconstruction, given that it appears to me that the money that we're gonna reimburse them is almost as much as the cost on average to replace those lines? Is there any consideration of anything like that or is it more of a, just a really vigorous information campaign?
Right now, we don't have the authority to say that you shall. I mean, the money is there. Our hope is that when they see it and they have lead service line, just the educational part that we should get that out is good. We are, I am working with the legal department right now in establishing an ordinance that would require it. Again, the state legislature just recently passed a bill that gives the municipality utility authority to help fund that. Whether you have grant money or not, you have the ability to use grant money, you can use a loan, or both. So right now, if we pass an ordinance that would say you shall replace that private side, when it's eligible to do so, they would have to do it.
In fairness to all my fellow councilmembers, I had my lead service line replaced this year and was able to take advantage of the rebate, so.
There might be other questions?
Sure.
Councilmember Worthman?
Thank you, Council President. Mr. Peppinger, thanks for all your work on this. We met last year and I know, we're working at the time too with a software developer to try to help people do a search of whether their home had lead pipes. I wanted to ask, the fund that we're, is it my understanding that we didn't utilize all the money that was set aside last year, but that couldn't just roll over or how is that, why are we setting aside more money if it wasn't fully utilized?
Good question. More money became available. So we applied for the grant and we received another three hundred thousand. The money from the first grant, five hundred thousand, that doesn't go away for three years. So we're gonna continue to utilize that five hundred thousand and with hopes of replacing two hundred and fifty lead service lines so we can utilize that up before we start on the three hundred thousand.
Thanks.
Which will be closing in June, so we'll have three years from that point to spend that money.
Makes sense.
Any other questions? Councilmember Beaton?
Thank you. I just wanna make sure I understand. So the money, the five hundred thousand that we received last year, we have two more years to spend that?
Correct.
And then the three hundred thousand that we have, that we are accepting right now, we have three years from now to spend that.
From June, right.
From June, okay. Just as a bit of feedback, I have had the pleasure to work on this issue, the lead issue, in a lot of different ways and I've had the opportunity to talk to a lot of people in the community and from what I've heard, there's a lot of interest in working with the city and so I'm really happy to hear that, that the city's kind of amping up the public outreach effort because from what I've heard, there's a strong concern for lead service lines and a strong interest in utilizing the programs that the city has, so, thank you.
And thank you also. I see no further questions. Down in motion, my Councilmember Bergy, seconded by Councilmember Christopherson, item twenty-one is moved. Discussion? And there being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Kincaid?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye. And that resolution passes. Item twenty-two is a resolution approving the twenty eighteen paratransit AIDS contract with the Department of, oh, the Wisconsin Department of Transportation. Ms. Adams?
Thank you. The State of Wisconsin, excuse me, through the Department of Transportation is continuing to provide paratransit AIDS program under Wisconsin Statute eighty-five point two zero five. The program helps public transit systems in the state maintain their current paratransit operations by providing additional funding. The City of Eau Claire's allotment under this contract is, for this year, is sixty-one thousand four seventy-five. This is an annual program and we don't have to actually make an application, the state just gives us the funds. And at the end of the year, a portion of these funds are distributed to Eau Claire County and the City of Altoona because they also help provide the paratransit services.
Questions for Ms. Adams? I see none this year. None. Motion then by Councilmember Strobel, seconded by Councilmember Anderson, item twenty-two is moved. Discussion? And there being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye. And that resolution passes. We move on to item twenty-three, which is a resolution approving the City of Eau Claire twenty eighteen, twenty twenty-two park open space and recreation facilities plan. Do councilmembers have questions of Mr. Peppinger regarding this report before we launch into a lively discussion, it looks like? Councilmember Emanuel?
Thank you, Madam President. I had an opportunity to watch the meeting last night while I was home recovering from a little procedure, so appreciate what you had to share. I had a couple of follow-up questions and in our report, it looks like it's on page eight and page, I think, eleven, yep, so eight and eleven. And essentially, what I, my question is about, on page eight is, on the third paragraph under the title Play Lot?
Mm-hmm.
And it says it is recommended that the city require, et cetera. Essentially, it's, there's a policy recommendation with new development that would come in and my question for you about this and then the next item on page eleven, it's a different topic, but same question, looking at setting, it says a city has not followed a specific standard setting relating the number of acres of the parks to the population. So those two things stood out to me and I'm wondering, are there plans in place to bring this back forth to the policy body, whether it's Plan, Waterways, or the council to codify these, these potential recommendations? So meaning, so in the case of, on page eight, it says, it's recommended that the city require that play lot facilities be required as a part of multiple family developments. So would we then see that in future development agreements if it satisfies that criteria? Or how do we make this happen?
If that's something that the city wants, as I said last night, we don't classify play lots because we don't have those in the city. To me, this is something that if you, this is something where it says too that the developer would develop it and maintain that, so it wouldn't be something that would be part of the city, infrastructure if you will. In regards to community parks, the acres within community parks, they're rather large parks. I mean, they're typically a hundred acres or more in size or very large, you know, are larger parks that you'll see so they can accommodate a lot more people. This one is relating to the number of acres within, the community parks should be provided for a given population. Again, I think that again falls in to the size of those community parks. We have some community parks that don't necessarily get up to that level of acreage that is recommended by the National Recreation Park Association.
May I follow up? Thank you. So let's, let's work backwards here and this is a learning opportunity for me. As I read it, I was interpreting this as, let's say, per every one citizen, a city should have point three seven acres of a park, something like that. So, so if we take our entire population, let's just say seventy and change, seventy thousand and change, is there some formula that could be calculated to say, well, in the best practice, this would be how much acreage we'd have set aside for our current population?
I'm gonna open up the, see if I can find this quickly. There was a, somewhat of a graph that showed, let's see if I can find that. Under the community park, these are, these are the criteria we try to meet. With a community park, again, group serve entire community, service area within twenty minutes travel time. Again, our community probably doesn't have that to where it meets that criteria and I think that's what it's talking about, but they did specifically say acreage and for a community park, desirable is a hundred plus acres. If you looked at the, on the, there was another graph here and I can turn to that. Some of our community parks don't reach that criteria of a hundred acres, they're smaller than that. So does it, does it meet that criteria? No, it probably doesn't. And that's something that, you know, I think in the plan it said we should be looking at that as perhaps something in the future, meeting some of those desirables that we have in the, into a community park.
May I follow up? Thank you. So it's probably me who's having a hard time communicating. I guess what I'm trying to clarify is, is there some type of ratio that would say, you know, per one person in the city, it's recommended that we have X amount of acreage available and then if so, how does our city compare to that? So are we exceeding expectations? Do we have some growth opportunities?
You know, there probably is that ratio. I don't know that right now. I mean, if, I could have gotten that if I would have known if that was what you wanted, but Mr. Pat Ivory might know that off the cuff. I'm not sure if he does. I don't wanna put him on the spot, but he may know what that ratio is.
Sure. And I was interpreting this paragraph to mean that, so that's why I was, I was seeking that additional clarification. So it's, it's not priority item tonight. At some time, I'd be curious to learn what, where we are situated. And then just regarding the other item on page eight, I'll go ahead and read the sentence. It says, "It is recommended that the city require that play lot facilities be required as part of multiple family developments." And it gives some additional criteria. So my question on that is, if this is adopted, does this infer that a policy is gonna come back to either the plan commission or to the city council that says if you have a multi-family development that meets this criteria, part of the development agreement must include a play lot?
I don't believe that means that, but I would maybe ask for some assistance with our legal to see if they would have an opinion on that.
Ms., oh, Mr. Neck?
I have no insight into that particular phrase. I mean, generally, the planning documents may, you know, indicate that that is something you're looking at. If you're gonna require it at some point, it would have to become an ordinance. Otherwise, you know, it's just a plan. But on this specific issue, I don't have any background on how it got in there, what the concept is for it moving forward, honestly.
Any further questions or, I don't think I moved this yet. Yeah, we're still at questions? Councilmember Gregor?
Thank you, Council President. Thank you again, Mr. Peppinger. Obviously, we've been in touch a bit over the last day with some conversations, but I guess one of my, a question would be, you know, I'm representing a district, District Three, for the, for the city and I, so I have a specific geographic area and I look at the, this amazing list of projects, these proposed projects and, and, you know, my area of the community, including the Third Ward, the university, part of the east side hill and the southwest side of Eau Claire, doesn't have a lot on here and maybe it's because so much great work has been done in the past that there aren't necessarily a lot of needs that have been identified by staff as part of the next five years, but I was wondering if you could maybe speak a little bit more, expanding upon the question I had last night too, about how citizens can, like, what is the next step for, for planning ahead so that if people have an idea for a park or an improvement, like a specific avenue to take? That would be my question again.
Well, I would say it takes a couple of different directions here. From this plan, we use this for putting plan, or into the capital improvement plan. We, a lot of the projects that are coming, they may go on to this. We discuss also that we have projects that come through public-private partnerships that we have, so that is another avenue where we, a group will approach us with a project, we'll bring it to typically our commissions to vet it through and then eventually it comes to city council to approve a memorandum of understanding to get into the fundraising for the project. The other projects could be staff-initiated. As we work on our parks, we have quite a few of those in the, in the city, that we see projects that have to be completed. So we make note of them to, eventually they would come on to the capital improvement plan at some point. They may not, some of the projects may be small enough that we can, we can take care of them through our operating rather than capital, so. But a lot, some of the projects you see on here, some are large, some are very small, but again, this is a, a work of getting together with all of our staff to say, okay, what are, what are some of the needs that we have in our park system? It's, it's a very comprehensive amount of projects. We don't expect to get them done in five years, but they're there for us to do planning with. As you see in the completed projects, we had several that were completed that also created an impressive list.
Hey, I see no further questions then. Thank you, Mr. Peppinger. I'll get this moved so we can open, move into our discussion. Now get this moved so we can open, uh, move into our discussion period. And we are round to a motion by Councilmember Emanuel and seconded by Councilmember Weld, which makes the item open for discussion, or amendment. Councilmember Gregor?
Uh, thank you, Council President. I guess in light of, of, uh, you know, some of the exploration of the last, uh, few days, and I did actually see this last week at Plan Commission, I, um, you know, I, I feel that there's an idea that's been out there, that's, that's in a, a draft, a copy of the bike and pedestrian plan, and that is also indicated in the Third Ward Neighborhood Plan that, um, there's got a potential, um, there's an interest in a, in a trail connection up to, um, the East Side Hill, between the Third Ward and the East Side Hill. And we were just talking about the Harding Avenue Project, uh, as, while the council before me, before I got on here, uh, was talking about that. And, um, so like, some, some more ideas have been bubbling up. So I, I thought I would actually make a motion to, uh, so I am going to make a motion to include, uh, a, a study of the feasibility of trail connections. And I can distribute that here. And it would go into the, into the list of, of proposed projects. And it's in red on this, uh, document, and I can read it in full as well. I see that, you know, there's an opportunity to potentially build, uh, to envision potentially a small park on the ridge line, um, of the city, south of, um, Forest Hill Cemetery, um, and north of Harding Avenue, and to the west of, of Flynn School. So in the next five years, it could be studied. And then maybe when a Harding Avenue project occurs, or some work is done at the cemetery, there could be a way to, to fit something in and fit something into a CIP in the future. So, um, so on page thirty-four, uh, of the plan, um, for the two thousand eighteen, twenty twenty-two listing of proposed projects, um, it would be to add a recreation trail. The project would be, uh, study the feasibility of trail connections and park space, north of Harding Avenue, south of Forest Hill Cemetery, and west of Flynn School property. And if there, um, if there is an extra copy of the motion, it, um, it could potentially go up on the screen, perhaps, um, just so the public can see it as well. That would be appreciated. And thank you.
And with that introduction, the chair would seek a second on the motion to amend?
A second.
Seconded by Councilmember Anderson. Do you have further comments on your motion to amend, Mr. Gregor?
Sure. Thank you, Council President. I, yeah, we did actually also receive a, an email from the, the chair of our Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee, um, and who also, uh, Mr. Aaron Salmon, who also serves on the Third Ward Neighborhood Association, and he's one of the, the folks that, um, has been vocal about this idea. And, um, you know, I think a, a lot of the connectivity is, is what this can bring. It could also be a recreational trail. It could also, uh, lead to a connection to the end of Dodge Street, on another part of the East Side Hill. But really, ultimately, this, this motion, this amendment to the plan, this, this new idea, um, and maybe something that other people have talked about, is, is really about studying the feasibility. It's not actually saying that we're going to do this, um, just as a lot of these items in this plan are, are not that definitive. But it is a way of keeping the conversation going, and, and, um, it, I think thematically, it fits well into a park or open space, um, concept. So, thank you.
Further discuss, any discussion on the motion to amend? Councilmember Emanuel?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, if you'll allow, I would like to ask the mover a question, just about, um, the intention of this. Thank you. Um, so I, I'll just put my cards out there. I would say, put it on the list. I don't know that we, I feel like we really need to study it. It seems like a good idea, and seems like perhaps additional staff time to study it versus putting it on the list. So, um, I'm not you, though, so perhaps there was a little bit more reason behind that, and wondering if you can talk a little bit about, um, perhaps the merits of studying it versus just saying, let's just put it on the list.
Councilmember Gregor?
Thank you, Council President. I, uh, well, I, I think that, um, yeah, it's one of those things where I haven't even thoroughly studied it yet, um, where I, you know, I haven't trounced around, and I know it is all city-owned land, the area that I'm envisioning, but it's a, I think it's, it kind of opens up for a, um, you know, to, to be less, uh, perhaps sure that it's necessarily a good idea, maybe from an environmental standpoint. Uh, maybe there's an environmental impact statement, because it could, it could include a staircase, for example, from Harding Avenue up to, um, the East Side Hill, just west of the Flynn property. And I, and I haven't exactly talked to the school necessarily, you know? So I think there's a number of, uh, there's a number of reasons to, there are a number of other places, in fact, that this document, that the plan actually, um, references studying an idea as well. So unless someone wants to have a friendly amendment, we could make it stronger. Thank you.
Further discussion on the motion to amend? Councilmember Strobel?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Gregor, or Councilmember Gregor. Um, did you bring this up at all at the Plan Commission for discussion?
Councilmember Gregor?
Thank you, Council President. I, uh, I did not bring this up specifically at Plan Commission. It's sort of, it's one of those things where, in a week's time, when we have our public process, uh, new ideas come forward and, and new opportunities. So, um, that, I guess that's part of our process. Thank you.
And, um, I, I don't have a, a problem supporting this, um, adding it to the list, studying the feasibility. My, my only concern is on the process part of it, um, a little bit, that it, it has gone through Parks and Waterways already and gotten approval, has gone through the Plan Commission already, gotten approval. Um, and, and I think that's, I would have preferred it maybe to be added at, at that time. Um, I, I think it's a valid idea, though.
And further discussion on the motion to amend? This raises an interesting point about our service on boards and commissions, and how it relates to serving on City Council. It's a kind of a teachable moment, as far as, um, how, how do those services complement each other, and how are they complex? And, um, I think Councilmember Strobel raised a good, uh, point, such that we don't often want to counter what boards and commissions have sent to us. Though we are, having said that, we are an ultimate authority. And, uh, though we haven't lightly, sometimes we maybe change something or add something. And it's my opinion that you are within that purview, and you've exercised properly your role in the Plan Commission, and admitted that you had this idea. It's a feasibility study, which is respectful of the process, the public input process. And you did a good job of being respectful of both the service, the Plan Commission, and staff in the process. I would be, I will be supporting this motion, um, in light of all that. So, Councilmember Gregor?
Thank you, Council President. I appreciate that pers, that perspective, and, you know, serving on a number of commissions, figuring out how they intersect with each other. And there was another idea that I, that I brought up at, at Plan Commission that I'm ultimately not going to be motioning to, to include, partly for some similar reasons mentioned earlier, and, um, and partly because it, it maybe fit into other planning documents more, uh, uh, well, better, I guess you could say. So, yeah, it's a, it's a learning process, and I think that this, this is one that is, uh, you know, I think we have a list of over a hundred ideas here, and, and I think that there's, there's a room for, for one more, and maybe others have, have more, so.
Any other discussion? There being none, we'll call the roll on the motion to amend.
Councilmember Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
And that motion to amend passes, so we're back to the resolution as amended. Any other discussion? And there being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Worthman?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
And that resolution passes, with thanks to staff for a, a very thorough process. Thank you. And that moves us to item twenty-four, a resolution accepting the Stormwater twenty-seventeen annual report. Mr. Gensko.
Okay, well, I will try to briefly describe a year's worth of activities and work that's occurred. This is a presentation on our two thousand seventeen MS four annual report, that stands for Municipal Separate Stormwater System. The attachments in that report were not included in your council packet. It makes it a rather lengthy document. They are listed on, I think, the third to last page, page one fifty-five in your packet, and I will be touching on them as I go through my presentation. The original permit was issued in two thousand and three as a group permit with the University of Wisconsin Eau Claire. It was reissued in very similar form in two thousand and nine. And then in two thousand and fifteen, to be consistent with the other MS four permits around the state, the DNR changed it to a general permit, and they removed the University of Wisconsin Eau Claire from the permit. The result of that was that it led to a much more manageable reporting form. Now, it's an online, fillable form that we do on the DNR website, as you can see in the packet. It used to be a rather, almost a notebook-sized document for what we did. There are generally six, well, there are six permit requirements. Most of them are involved with pollution prevention. It's a whole lot easier and a whole lot cheaper to keep pollutants from getting into stormwater runoff than it is to remove them once they are there. And I'll go through these items as we go through the, uh, annual report. Uh, the compliance with our permit involves all the city departments, um, even down to the police department if we have some severe enforcement requirements. Fortunately, since I've been here, we've not had to do that. But, uh, every, every department has been involved, particularly this summer, uh, between the legal department and us getting our stormwater ordinances updated. It was a rather intensive effort. Part of the public education and involvement involves the Rain to Rivers of Western Wisconsin. That's a collaboration of MS four permitted communities. It started out being the, just in the Chippewa Valley, and, uh, we were successful enough that the DNR actually used us as an example of how organizations like this might function as others formed around the state. We were the second, maybe the third to be formed in the state. Now there is about ten, I believe. Then as the St. Croix Valley communities, some of them got, um, pulled into the, the permit process. The DNR actually encouraged them to join our organization, so we expanded west as a way of pooling our resources and, um, our efforts to get the word out. This is a list of all the, um, communities that are in there, and we go up as far north as Rice Lake as well. In our annual report, the first two items on that list were public education and outreach. Uh, it asks us to list the mechanisms that we do. There's a Rain to Rivers website. If you Google Rain to Rivers, you will find both our website and you'll find our Facebook page that has many of the components that are being asked for in these, um, well, in our permit. There are, um, public service announcements, uh, we have meetings with developers with new development to make sure that those are environmentally sensitive, actually with our own staff as we do our winter ice control. And then we meet with property owners periodically as we see things, uh, going on or as they have concerns. Uh, as far as public participation, there was a series of open houses and presentations to different, uh, bodies as we did our stormwater ordinance. We work with the Half Moon Lake Task Force, uh, as Half Moon Lake gets improved. And then various community cleanup programs. We have our amazing Eau Claire cleanup, uh, there's a Clean the Kenny over in River Falls, there's some along the St. Croix River as well. Uh, Rain to Rivers is an organization, we were involved in fifty-seven events over the course of the year, so that averages out to more than one event per week. So it's a fairly active organization. Some of the examples of what we do, there's a brochure, I've mentioned the website, uh, we've updated the brochure that talks about ten things homeowners can do to keep pollutants out of runoff and where the runoff goes. Whoops, I think I hit a button I shouldn't have. Can we hit that back? Sorry about that. The rest of it, it, at least the next couple of displays are going to be examples of different displays. Here we go. So, uh, these are some, um, displays that we can, uh, change them around to be audience-specific for different events. Another example of a more recent one that we've prepared, these are some panels that, uh, the University of Wisconsin Extension has put together. And then, uh, here's an example, this was last year at the Northern Wisconsin State Fair where it's all put together, and you can see the different panels, our brochures are on the table. There was actually a rain barrel giveaway that went along with that. And, uh, as I look around this, uh, group, I've seen some of you at different conferences. We were recently at the, um, the Red Cedar Conference and celebrate the Chippewa River, and, and some of those over the years. On the left there, you see a kiosk that we had at the Oakwood Mall that actually was in the winter, telling people about being careful how much salt you put on your sidewalks, because that ends up in our streams. And then on the right is a, um, banner we actually had out at Carson Park. We had some giveaways during some of the, uh, baseball games that if they followed onto our website, we were giving away chamber bucks to some of the, uh, people that came onto the site. On all of our public stormwater facilities, we have signs talking about how it is a stormwater facility and, um, don't dispose of things there. Rain gardens, we have a, actually, mini-grant program where we help nonprofits, uh, install rain gardens. This particular sign is on Water Street across from Haas. It was a collaboration with the University of Wisconsin Eau Claire as they did that parking lot, um, they installed a rain garden there, and so we helped fund the interpretive sign to go along with that. If you've been to some of the movies, we've had some short clips before movies. The one on the right is a, uh, it's actually a goldfish, and it's talking about as you put motor oil or fertilizers, pesticides, pet waste, uh, what that does to the water column where the fish live. The other one that we did had to do with rubber duckies, and it associated a little rubber ducks with each one of those forms of pollutants, and then showed, uh, how the runoff got into the inlets. And in the course of the short video, water came out to the lakes, and then now you were swimming where the water was, trying to establish the relationships there. And then there's been some radio spots over time as well. Uh, we developed a storm, or a school curriculum very similar to junior achievement. Uh, it's five, one-hour sessions geared towards, um, middle school, early high school age, and that was distributed to all the middle schools and high schools in western, northwestern Wisconsin. Uh, we've done a number of presentations over the time. Um, okay, well, that was the part of the public involvement in education. Now we're on to, um, the illicit discharge and detention and elimination. We inspect all of our outfalls for dry weather flows. If there's water in a pipe during dry weather, usually it means somebody's putting something in there they shouldn't. Um, we only found, had one, well, we didn't see any dry weather flows. That wasn't, uh, established to be groundwater. Uh, we had one complaint, there was a tank overflow. Uh, as that was checked out, um, there was no pollutant that left the site. So, uh, all in all, that's been pretty successful. Our fire department responded to thirty-eight spills. Usually those will be associated with an accident or something like that, but, uh, thirty-eight spills were cleaned up associated with that. Then we go on to construction site pollutant control. We had sixty-eight site plans and development agreements that involve some sort of land disturbance. We had sixty-eight site plans and development agreements that involve some sort of land disturbance activity, and so they get inspected for erosion control measures. Along with those same sixty-eight, there were post-construction stormwater requirements that involved BNP's for water quality enhancement and peak rate runoff control. And so we enforce all of that. We also updated our stormwater ordinance. And we worked with the Central Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission to update the Chippewa Falls Eau Claire Urban Sewer Service Area Plan that had different components for slope stabilizations and sensitive area stabilizations. Turns out that the DNR has three different mechanisms for regulating grading on sites greater than an acre in addition to what we, as the city, do. They regulated through the wastewater permits, they regulated through mining permits, and they regulated through grading permits through the stormwater group. And there are some sites that actually all three get involved in, and so that was a way to try to have some consistency there. Whoops, can I go? I think I skipped the page. As part of our maintenance, we maintain sixty-seven of our public stormwater facilities. We've removed over six thousand tons through our street sweeping activities. We had limited de-icing. We've reduced the amount of material we put on the streets. We put a little over four thousand tons of road chlorides, seventeen hundred tons of, of sand. And then we've upped the amount of liquid brine and carbohydrates that we put on to just short of twenty-nine thousand gallons for that. And we sent our crews to a winter maintenance seminar that's been hosted by the Rain to Rivers for the last several years. And each year, a certain number go to that, and that, that trains our crews. Sometimes the tendency is if a little is good, a lot is more. But if a lot's not needed, it ends up in our rivers, and we don't want that. And the brines and the carbohydrates that we put, sometimes it's beet juice is what that is. And that's a biodegradable, more environmentally friendly form of de-icing. So, and then we keep our storm sewer map up to date. So what's before you today is a resolution saying that this has been presented to you, that you've received it, and that that's the last step before we can submit the report to the DNR. And actually, this presentation is part of the public education of all the things that we do for stormwater and to keep pollutants out of runoff. So with that, I'll stop.
Thank you, Mr. Jensko. Any questions?
I noted in the report that we spend about four times more on prevention, education, and outreach than we do on detection and control. So that's good. That seems to, in the little graph that I just went through, very cursory, but it was backed up by your comment about that prevention and education pays off.
Well, I think we're blessed with a community that's fairly environmentally aware, so we're not chasing down a whole lot of illicit connections. There are not a lot of people doing that, and so that means we don't have to work so hard at preventing it.
It could be linked also to the fact that we've had a rigorous education.
Thank you.
Effort since way before I was on council, but certainly in the last fourteen years, rigorous and growing effort, so it's much appreciated.
Councilmember Strobel.
Thank you. Mr. Jensko, a great, great report, and I can't believe all the, all the stuff that you're doing. That's an amazing, amazing amount of work going into this. I've had a question, though, for a while, and maybe you're the guy that can, can answer it for me. I've always been a little concerned with where we take our snow. We, our, our snow removal site is right by the river. So how does that mesh with what you're talking about here? Is you don't want that type of stuff to get into the river? It just, it never really made sense to me to have our, our, our snow removal site next to the rivers.
Well, if you don't, and, and I'm going to answer. If, if you don't put it right next to the river, then the runoff is going to go through our storm sewer systems and get to the river anyway. Usually when you're wanting that snow to melt, you still have some frost in the table. And so then you have problems that way. I will tell you, though, that at those sites, there is no direct runoff to the river. We endeavor to have inlets that have protection. They'll have sediment traps around them. They'll have some kind of filter before the water can get into the inlet. And frankly, it's because the snow that gets removed. It's, it's got debris in it, it's got garbage, and it's got whatever people have thrown out on the streets. And just like we don't want it in our storm sewers and in the river in the summer, we don't want it there in the spring either. So those are some of the measures that are done to prevent that from happening. Is it always successful? Not always, but at least it's a good, solid effort.
Councilmember Worthman.
Thank you, Council President. Thanks for this report and all of your, your time and work. You had mentioned the amount of brine that we put on, I believe it's sand and other things. How, how does that compare to what we used to be, what, what our city used to do for winter road and ice control?
Well, it used to be all, all salt and sand. And the problem, well, the problem with salt is, well, there's different types of salt. You know, and the sodium works to high twenties, and by the time it gets down to sub-zero, you go to a potassium. So you have to have a, and, and you're still going to have a bunch of supply. But brine is easier to store, you can, and mix it as you go. The other thing that brine does, and it actually started being used on bridges, it was a way of putting an application down that kept the snow from sticking to the pavement. Whereas when you're applying salt and sand, you're applying that on top, the ice is bonded, and then you've got to melt it away. So it's, it's much more effective to do it that way. The first brines were more of a salt brine, and then they started using a beet juice, which actually, not so much here, but it turned the roads purple, or they were using it. It had a faint purple to it. And now, over time, they've, they've gone away from the beet, but they're using different carbohydrates to substitute what the beet does. And it's a way of, there's a chemical reaction that goes on, and I don't know that I fully understand it, so I don't know how I would explain it to you. But it, but it's, it's a way of making that salt and the potassium and the other products more efficient without having to use as much and having a product that can break down and doesn't leave the, the chlorides in the water.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Jensko. We'll get on with our, our passage of our resolution so you can close out your year. And to that end, on a motion by Councilmember Beaton, seconded by Councilmember Jean, item twenty-four is moved. Any further discussion? And there being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Jean.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Beaton.
Aye.
Bergy.
Aye.
Christopherson.
Aye.
Emanuel.
Aye.
Gregert.
Aye.
Kincaid.
Aye.
Strobel.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
Worthman.
Aye.
And that resolution passes. Item twenty-five on our business agenda is a resolution authorizing the acceptance of a donation from Mr. Zach Holmstead for the aesthetic lighting on the Haymarket Plaza pedestrian bridge. Mr. Windsor.
Thank you, Council President Kincaid, members of the City Council. Local resident Zach Holmstead has very graciously offered a donation in the amount of one hundred and ten thousand dollars to the city of Eau Claire to assist in lighting the pedestrian bridge that will be connecting Haymarket Plaza across the Eau Claire River to, to Phoenix Park. This will allow not only the, that pedestrian bridge to be lit, but also allow the Grand Avenue pedestrian bridge to be, to be lit with the aesthetic lighting as well. This will bring to a total of three bridges within the downtown area, or three pedestrian bridges within the downtown area that will include those aesthetic lights. The resolution before you accepts this donation from Mr. Holmstead, and because this does appropriate funds, will require a two-thirds vote of the City Council.
Questions for Mr. Windsor. Thank you. No, and a motion by Councilmember Worthman, seconded by Councilmember Gregert. Item twenty-five is moved, and discussion is in order. And there being none. Councilmember Strobel.
I just, I just think it's, it'd be really nice to, you know, thank Mr. Holmstead for his donation, you know, from the council. And I mean, I'm not quite sure what, what the city does in these situations. To show our appreciation, if we send a nice letter or what.
Already drafted.
Perfect. I mean, it's, it's fantastic. I, I look forward to seeing both those bridges lit.
And further discussion? There being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Beaton.
Aye.
Bergy.
Aye.
Christopherson.
Aye.
Emanuel.
Aye.
Gregert.
Aye.
Kincaid.
Aye.
Strobel.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
Worthman.
Aye.
Jean.
Aye.
And that resolution passes. The last item on our business agenda is a resolution approving appointments and reappointments to various boards, committees, and commissions. Before I continue, the chair seeks without objection to remove the appointment of Police and Fire Commissions, so it may be taken up separately. Any objection? Seeing none, we will take up that one appointment as a separate item. Using a moment again as a time to educate maybe new councilmembers a little bit. When I did the council orientation, I talked at, at some length about how Wisconsin, and in particular, I guess, Eau Claire, although I'm not quite sure about that particular part, in many ways embodies the tenets of what was the progressive era. And we talked about that in the orientation at, at some length. Bob LaFollette was a Republican governor of our state who was incensed by political graft and corruption within political parties. And he was very instrumental in founding and finding and implementing and urging the adoption of a more open, transparent, and a, a form of government that gathers public input and has a very flat power structure. And our city council is absolutely an example of a very flat power structure. We all are, are equals, really. So one outcome of that is how we do appointments to boards, commissions, and committees. During my tenure, I have seen boards, commissions, and committees as an, as an instrument of the council, who help us gather expertise, give us advice, elicit expertise from citizens who are interested in a particular thing, they want to really work on it, and so it's an outlet for that kind of work. And it's an important training ground for people who someday consider running for city council. And many of you have served on boards and commissions. And so it, it serves a really important function. I've had, I've worked with several city managers, and we've had some tension over whether boards and commissions are, to what extent are they an extension of staff work. And I believe, I believe that we've come to a sort of, an understanding, a calm. And the way we do appointments is a reflection of that understanding. So as a, as a council, we appoint three of us to be on the Appointments Committee. That's a rare thing in local politics. The, the president does have a standing position, but that's the, otherwise, two councilmembers every year. It can circulate around, and we often don't even have a chair. We're a committee of colleagues who rely on Ms. Merle's expertise in getting our packet together, and we meet there as colleagues. And I actually prefer that we don't have a chair, although we have had a chair sometimes. And I, I don't know, I like it when we just work as colleagues better, but. So the city manager sits on that committee but doesn't get to vote. And so therein lies where that tension between what is the duty and the responsibility and the power of an elected official, but how does one interact with the executive branch to make good decisions and respect each other and fill these boards and commissions that we rely on and that actually our city staff relies on, on also. So in our first committee meeting of this council, Mr. Peters presented each committee. We've always done it in alphabetical order, so there's no thing. It's just alphabetically ordered. And also presented some staff recommendations for people who might be a good fit. And those recommendations come directly from working with the board or commission. Kathy Mitchell helped us instill a very important habit in our boards, commissions, and committees, and that is asking them, what, what expertise do you need? Help us figure out what you need to fill your board and commission and committee. So Mr. Peters presented that information to us. So that's a really long way of saying that we are embodying one of the important tenets of the progressive era, which is transparency, a broad public input, and a, a healthy respect for the executive function and the sort of realizing that sometimes political decisions are made for less than honorable reasons, I guess, is what Mr. LaFollette was so angry about. So, so I, I lay all that at you because here you are as your function of approving our recommendations, the recommendations of the committee, and that's your function. We, and I, we've never had somebody object that I can remember, but you do have the right to object to one of our appointments. And the, I was talking about that authority that we have in a previous item. We do have that authority to overturn or object or vote against or, you know, that power lies within us, and rightfully so. People elected us to lead and make decisions, and by gum, that's what we have to do. We have to fess up and make decisions. So I'm going to read this list. These are recommendations of the Appointments Committee. We don't also say if they are unanimous or not. Ninety-nine percent of the time, they are a unanimous vote. This time, the Plan Commission was not a unanimous vote. But most of the times, the three people talk and discuss and hear from the city manager, and we come to you with our recommendations thus. So that was a really long little lesson, but it's only five twenty. So when we move to the courthouse, we're still going to be okay because it's only five twenty-two. And I don't think I took up too much time. So for the council's review, here are the recommendations of the Appointments Committee. Oh, and I read these into the public record because a long time ago, the radio station, one oh one nine, I think, four, one oh one nine, wanted us to read the names. Well, back when Dave Adler was president, he started this habit because people who are listening out there wanted to hear the names. So that's why they're read out loud. So to the Administrative Review Board, five reappointments to expire in 2020. Donna Osted, Wilhelmina Fisher, Sarah Hauer, Dave Olson, and Jesse Weber. To the Board of Heating Examiners, two reappointments to expire in 2020. Fred Gardner and Daniel Larson. To the Building Code Committee, a new appointment for a term to expire in 2021, Jeff Stutz. And two reappointments to expire in 2021, William Betcher and Michael Fern. And to the Housing Advisory Board, three reappointments to expire in 2020. And to the housing advisory board, three reappointments to expire in 2021. John Moss, Bob Schraffenagle, and Dr. Susan Wolfgram. And to the housing authority, a reappointment to a five-year term to expire in 2023, Joshua Dalton. And to the library board, three reappointments to expire in 2021. Brenda Brant, Robert Ironman, and Linda Stelter. It's a long list, so bear with me. And to the plan commission, a new appointment, a three-year term to expire in 2021, Zina Obaid. And a reappointment to a three-year term to expire in 2021, Craig Brenholdt. And to the revolving loan fund committee, three reappointments to expire in 2021. Larry Akala, Carmen Briggs, Corey Haupt, and Tyler Tomisch. And to the Seven Mile Creek landfill standing committee, one reappointment to expire in 2019, Dr. Thomas Kemp. And to the South Barstow Business Improvement Bid District, one new appointment to fill an unexpired term that will itself expire in 2020, Mr. Jason John Anderson. And to the sustainability advisory committee, a new appointment to a three-year term to expire in 2021, Brian Graff. And two reappointments to expire also in 2021, Anna Mohegan and Stephen Tewilliger. And to the transit commission, a new appointment to a three-year term to expire in 2021, Georgia Eaton. And a reappointment for the same term, 2021, Cheryl Kaisler. And to the Water Street Business Improvement District Board, five reappointments to expire in 2019. Erin Bryce, Mickey Judkins, Jeremy Cockmar, Joel Mickelson, and Sandy O'Connell. And lastly, to the Waterways and Parks Commission, a new appointment to fill an unexpired term to expire in 2020, Dr. Kirk Dahl. Do councilmembers have questions about any of these appointments? Councilmember Struble?
Well, I, I would comment on maybe some comments you made earlier. It seems to me that I remember when Councilmember Dux was, was on the council, I think we probably did look at an appointment or two, whether we ever overturned it or not, I can't remember, but I, I think we have done it in the past. My one thing is, I, I think in the past, I thought we had sort of a, we got a copy, when these, when these came out, we got a copy of the, I don't know, it's not a resume, but maybe the application letter stating the people's qualifications and why they wanted to do this. And, and I don't see any of that in the packet.
They, they come out to you as they're received by the city clerk, the, what's your title? Administrative assistants. They come out to us one at a time and are attached often to our Friday update packet? Or?
Well, correct, but I guess I, I would like, I mean, if we're going to make the appointments, it's, I mean, we could have gotten some of these like six months ago or a year ago. I mean, I don't think we necessarily keep track of all of them, but just, that was just my question.
Well, thank you for that insight. Our packet was 112 pages long this time, so. There's kind of a logistic thing. Councilmember Worthman?
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to say that in terms of the chair of the committee, I had served on this appointments committee a number of years. We always had a chair, in fact, a number of years I chaired it, I believe, until recently. Kathy Mitchell was chair of the committee, and so I think it's unusual not to have a chair, and I'm hoping that we, in future meetings, do pick a chair, because I think that's sort of the usual course for this committee, and, and we'll take that up hopefully at our next meeting.
Any other comments or discussion? Councilmember Greggert?
Thank you, Council President. I obviously appreciate the work of the, of the committee to give us this list, and I, you know, obviously, over the year, years maybe, councilmembers have received new applicants for our resource bank, but we have a number of new councilmembers as well that wouldn't have received those. We did get a, an email from city staff with like a full list of folks who had signed up in the resource bank and, and had resumes and such attached, and it's obviously very helpful to the committee, but maybe it wasn't something that, that all councilmembers could, can really realistically read through at this point. But I noticed that specifically Transit Commission didn't have any folks in the resource bank, but maybe some folks were found in the meantime since that, that packet went out to councilmembers. And I guess I'm, I have a question about how we do ultimately have identified some folks and who were found for that, and also I have a question specifically about the university student position, and whether that is something that goes through appointments committee, because I know that the student that served on Transit Commission graduated. So, maybe a number of questions about the process for Transit Commission specifically, considering there were no resource bank applicants in the packet that we got.
Yeah, I, I have, I take some fault, and I'll get to my, my fault in just a minute. But if I remember, Ms. Merle, the committee did see the resource forms for the two applicants for the Transit Commission.
That's correct. They were in the packet with the resource bank list and the existing Transit Commission. They were, two specific names weren't enlisted on the cover sheet.
They were in our packet, but they, the names didn't make our cover sheet, but they were in the packet for, let me see. We took some time at the appointments committee, too, to straighten that out and look, look through, make sure that we looked through the application. I tried to say that the commissions help us. Mr. Wagner and the Transit Commission help identify names, especially, I think in the Transit Commission's case, they want to make sure that some or all or quite a few of the people on the commission are, are bus riders. I don't think it's a hard and fast rule, but we asked that question in the appointments committee, and I think it's on the form. So, it's a, it's, so I gave that kind of flowery speech about how great this system is, but it's not without, without its problems. And Ms. Merle puts together a very complicated packet, and sometimes under the gun, appointments were waiting, we were kind of delayed, and so there's all, that's not a perfect thing. And then I'll get to my confession. Some time ago, Mr. Weber sent me an email about the person who the university has already appointed, and I keep forgetting to get that email to Ms. Merle, so it will go on our, by the time school starts, it'll, it'll be on the appointments committee's agenda. I have a name, and they've, they've already approved the name, the student's on it, so my fault on that. So. Council?
Thank you, Madam President. Is it possible, if there already is a name for the university, if the student is around this summer, maybe they would like to be appointed sooner, that maybe that could be brought back up, or?
Mr. Weber's emails said they would be ready in the fall, that this person, and the name I can't remember, but. Ready to take their position in the fall.
I have another, I don't know, maybe it's a comment or a follow-up to what Mr. Struble said, if I may? Thank you. As a little bit of some historical perspective, I served on the appointments committee for at least three years, it might have been four, maybe longer, I can't remember. And it seems like during that time, the appointments committee was fielding a lot of questions of what's going on. So at that point, I believe the city started CCing, or excuse me, sending out the agenda to councilmembers so that they would at least be in the loop to know what's on the horizon, what is appointments working on. So to that extent, I would just ask the city manager to consider just including either that packet that goes to the appointments committee, or including us on the appointments committee email, or just forwarding it to us, or giving us that PDF packet. It seems like that's a different type of attachment that council could review. And then, at a later time, I'd be interested in learning about, is it possible to archive any of the minutes online? I wasn't able to see it, and I know that we do have a lot of other committees and commissions that have their items online. So I think that's helpful, maybe connecting councilmembers to that information will be helpful.
Okay. Further discussion? There being none, on a motion by Councilmember Beaton, seconded by Councilmember Worthman, item 26 is moved, except police and fire. And Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Beaton.
Aye.
Bergy.
Aye.
Kristofferson.
Aye.
Emanuel.
Aye.
Greggert.
Aye.
Kincaid.
Aye.
Struble.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
Worthman.
Aye.
Jean.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
And that resolution passes. We go back to the appointment for the police and fire commission. On a motion also by Councilmember Beaton and seconded by Councilmember Worthman, the following appointment is recommended to the city council. A reappointment to a five-year term to expire in 2023 of Dr. Daniel Kincaid. Any questions or discussion on that appointment? There being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Bergy.
Aye.
Kristofferson.
Aye.
Emanuel.
Aye.
Greggert.
Aye.
Kincaid.
Epstein.
Struble.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
Worthman.
Aye.
Jean.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Beaton.
Aye.
And that resolution passes. We have two ordinances for action tonight, the first being an ordinance rezoning property at the northwest corner of LaSalle and East Princeton from R1A to R1. Any questions from our meeting last evening? And on a motion, and by Councilmember Emanuel, seconded by Councilmember Weld, item 27 is moved. There being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Kristofferson.
Aye.
Emanuel.
Aye.
Greggert.
Aye.
Kincaid.
Aye.
Struble.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
Worthman. Jean.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Beaton.
Aye.
Bergy.
Aye. And that ordinance is adopted. And our final ordinance for tonight is an ordinance amending the city code relating to restaurants, sidewalk cart food vendors, and mobile food establishments operating in the city of Eau Claire. Questions of Ms. Strumberger from last evening? We had a couple emails come our way with some questions having been answered, or at least available for your review, if you had time today. So without questions, I'm just going to move the items, and then we can move into discussion, okay? So, we're around to a motion by Councilmember Beaton, seconded by Councilmember Jean, and that makes the mobile food vendors ordinance open for discussion. Councilmember Emanuel.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to say thank you to our community and to city staff, and to business owners who came together to provide feedback for this important door that is open to people to start businesses here in our city. I think food trucks are a really important part of our local economy, because it offers a different price point for business owners to enter into the market and to compete for dollars here. And so, food trucks often operate at a lower capital cost or capital, capital investment than a traditional bricks and mortar. So, I think this is one component of a healthier economic system. And we'll have a motion a little bit later, but just want to nod my hat to the good work and the good efforts.
Member Beaton?
Thank you. I'll just echo that and say that I was really pleased by the, the community engagement model with this issue, that we had this ordinance that wasn't being used at all, and definitely not in the way that we wanted to see it. And so we've got stakeholders together and a community, community conversation going to hopefully create something that, that will foster more activity around this ordinance. I, I recently spoke to a policymaker in a different city who said, if we want cool things to happen, we need to make it easy for those things to happen. And so I think that this is a really good example of that. So thank you to staff.
Further discussion? Councilmember Greggert?
Thank you, Council President, and I did also want to thank staff, I engaged a bit on some questions about, you know, possibly doing a motion to, to amend, but I, I think, I don't think I will, because I also had some discussions with, with some folks in the community. But the thing I was thinking about, and maybe some of my colleagues have some feedback for me, on is, you know, there's a number of restrictions on where a mobile food cart can be placed in the public street. And, you know, one of my concerns as someone who has used food trucks or used businesses that have a food truck in front of them, has access to the bicycle parking, whether, you know, in some cases, I can't find the bicycle parking, or I can't access it, or my bike is already parked at it, and I can't actually get my bike as easily, because there's a very popular food truck around with. So it's, I mean, it's a great thing for us to, to find ways to, to open up this business opportunity and this cultural opportunity to our community. So ultimately, the point of all of these changes is, what I'm gathering, is that this is about easing some of the regulations and fees and, but what I was thinking about was something that would say that, you know, perhaps adding an amendment saying that no mobile food establishments shall, shall conduct business within 15 feet of a bicycle parking facility, which ultimately is not, you know, in, in the spirit of the changes here, where it's, you know, we're looking for more spaces, not, not fewer. And as I discussed this with some, some business owners and people that not only like bikes, they like food trucks, they have a business, maybe that has, has a small frontage, they have a bike rack, but then this would preclude them from being able to actually have a food truck in front of their business. Therefore, I will not be making that motion, and see how these changes and see how our ordinance continues to, to hopefully encourage and move food trucks and mobile food establishments forward. But just something to keep in mind, and engaging with staff is an incredible way to, to learn and engaging with the business community and, and feedback from people. So, so I just wanted to kind of mention that as a consideration, too, as part of the, the discussion here on these ordinance changes.
Thank you. Councilmember Weld?
Thank you, Council President. I had the opportunity to attend the, the listening session with the mobile food vendors when they came and met with staff, and it was a great opportunity to, to hear their thoughts and concerns, and I thought staff did a great job of, of listening and answering their questions. And then actually the proposal that's come back before us, I, I really feel like what's been presented is exactly what they had asked for. Almost every item that they brought up and, and discussed is, is being addressed here today. I, I did want to make, I had a couple of amendments, and I, and I'll start with one, and then again, we can- to make, I had a couple of amendments, and I'll start with one, and then again, we can have some discussion. But I guess I would like to move to amend, and I'll pass this out, if that's okay. So my, my concern was the, the change that was made. I don't know if it was actually something that was discussed at the listening session, but a question that came up afterwards, and a question that was brought before staff in regards to what happens if this happens, you know, how do we handle it? And so, you know, I want to be a voice for the bricks and mortar establishments as well. And I feel like this is an opportunity that could lead to, I guess I'm referring to is changing the language to state that it can be closer than, or less than 200 feet from a restaurant, as long as those restaurants approve. I'm concerned that, number one, there could be some animosity there between business owners. If a bar were to want to have a food truck out in front, and their neighboring restaurant were to say no, I just, I won't, I won't accept that. Now there's this tension possibly between business owners. I feel like the 200 feet is something that we've seen consistent in other communities throughout Wisconsin and Minnesota, and it's worked well. I guess I would like to see that language remain the same, and not allow the opportunity to move closer with permission. Again, I feel like those that have built their businesses and paid the price to purchase a building, and pay the property taxes that go with that, and all the overhead that goes with that, that we really try and make it as easy as possible for them to. And I think that this administratively would be difficult, because now we're, we're having food trucks going to businesses and trying to get their permission, and then when that business changes hands, we're going back. And so I like, I like the original proposal and leaving it at that. The way it reads is, there is an exception. And the question came up is, what if there's a business that wants to have a food truck, and there is a restaurant nearby that business, and they own both? Can they still have it? And this allows them to do that. So that if there is an event that, that can be hosted by an area business, and they perhaps have a restaurant nearby, there isn't that conflict, and they're not prevented from doing so. So that's my motion, and I'll wait for any other questions or discussion.
I'll second it if that was a motion.
Motion has-
That was my comment.
A motion has been offered, and by Councilmember Weld, and seconded by Councilmember Strobel, with an explanation on board already, and that makes discussion in order. Councilmember Strobel?
I have a question for the mover, just as I'm reading through this. I wonder if it's necessary to have B in there, because it seems that you accomplish what you want to accomplish without having that in there. Is all restaurants within 200 feet of the proposed operation site are under common ownership or control? So if they are, is it necessary, then, for them to still get the signature of their own property? Or, I'm not quite following that.
I think the idea there was just to continue with the, the protocol of having written, a written invitation on hand for the food truck, in case someone were to question it. Maybe another business owner, another food truck, maybe question.
Okay, thank you.
Member Beaton?
Thank you. I have a similar question. With this motion, could, say for instance, a food truck wants to vend outside where there's three restaurants close by, all owned by different people, could the three restaurants collectively invite that food truck on their own accord? And I don't, based on how it's written, would that be allowed?
I guess I have a little bit of information on that, and staff can, can add to it. But if they want to invite a food truck onto their own private property, they're welcome to do so. If the food truck is going to be parked in the street, then it would still fall back to the original guidelines, and it could be corrected.
Ms. Strick?
Right. Under the motion, even with permission, that wouldn't be possible. So it's 200 feet is the standard, unless a smaller distance, if all the restaurants are under common ownership. So, you know, your example would be that they might all invite, but they're under different ownership, so no, they wouldn't meet prong A. So at least my understanding of Councilmember Weld's request to our office to put this together was, you didn't want that type of potential for conflict that might arise. And so it's a very limited exception, where you maybe only have one restaurant within the 200 feet, and obviously, that would be under common ownership, and then they could offer that invitation and allow. Or if there's two or three, they'd all have to be owned by the same entity, or related entities.
Councilmember Worthman?
Thank you, Council President. I don't believe I'll support this motion. I respect the author and the intent of it. When this came forward last year, or two years ago, I think I was, at the time, felt it was actually a little too protective of the restaurant, restaurants, in terms of the setback. I kind of think of food trucks as restaurants, and they ought to be treated similarly, similarly, and that we don't tell a restaurant that wants to open up a couple properties away, that they have to, to get written permission in order to compete to sell food. And I would say that if anything, you know, a little competition is good. You know, not everyone wants that, obviously, but I think in our community, that can be a good thing. More access to food is a good thing. And so these kind of protections, I often think, are a little strong. And this motion, in my opinion, kind of brings us further in that protective direction. I would say, if anything, the ordinance kind of strikes a balance, in terms of how it's written right now. So I won't be supporting it, but I do respect kind of the thinking behind this. I just, I fear it might be too restrictive.
Councilmember Beaton?
Thank you. I'm also on the edge a little bit. And I do, I do recognize the need to, I guess I would disagree a little bit, and would recognize the need to differentiate between a food truck and a restaurant, in that they, you know, one is paying property taxes, and one has significant, significantly different, different startup costs, and that sort of thing associated with a brick and mortar. But I, you know, I think that, I guess I, I have confidence that our restaurants will be able to work it out. And I think that we entrust this, this faith in other parts of our city, and other citizens, to gain permission to do certain things. So I guess what comes to thought first is our B ordinance, where you have to get written permission from, I think, 80% or maybe 100% of the neighbors around, around you. And so, you know, we, we do that there, and, and our folks here in Eau Claire are able to civilly work that out. And so I think that, I guess I'm still, I'm still on the fence, but that's sort of my initial thought.
And Councilmember Strobel?
Thank you. I guess I'll disagree a little bit with Councilmember Worthman as well. I do think there's a pretty substantial investment in the bricks and mortar that the food trucks don't have to. So I think providing them a little bit of protection is not a bad thing. I love the idea of food trucks, and I really hope this is successful. I think the intent, the way I'm seeing this, behind this motion, would be, I'm thinking of some situations down by me downtown, where you have potentially taverns that don't serve food. And they may, you know, they, they may not want to get in any type of, they may have people that own the restaurants nearby. And, and they may, the restaurants may not want them having that food truck, I guess, and/or vice versa. And, and so trying to keep the conflicts down a little bit between those owners, I think that's my understanding of the intent of it.
Member Emanuel?
Thank you, Madam President. I have, I guess, a couple questions, and I'll just start by saying, I'm sorry I don't get it. So I'll ask for your help, just to help me learn a little bit more. So let's say, under 6A, it says, "All restaurants within 200 feet of the proposed operation site are under common ownership or control." So let's just say we have a restaurant, many restaurants owned by a corporation called Patty the Pig. And they're all on, I don't know, Circle Street. And if Patty the Pig owns a bunch of restaurants on Circle Street, that means that a food truck couldn't go to Circle Street?
Councilmember Weld?
Thank you, Council President. The idea is that if an individual person owns a building or a business, you know, within proximity, within less than 200 feet of a restaurant that they also own, but let's say, the business or the building that they own is a completely different type of business, a different entity altogether, and they want to host an event outside their building or their business to have a customer appreciation day or something. And this only comes up, and is only an exception, because it's something that's been brought before staff, and the only reason that it's here is because it's a question that's been brought before staff. But this allows that person, because he owns the restaurant, or his company owns the restaurant, or he's part of the ownership group, to have a food truck in front of his business as well, because it's less than 200 feet. Does that make sense?
Were you done?
Yes.
Councilmember Emanuel?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm still confused. So this means that if, I'm going to go back to Patty the Pig LLC, if she has a whole bunch of restaurants, and she also has a food truck, then Patty the Pig's food truck could be parked in front of Patty the Pig's restaurant?
I'll defer to the city attorney. I think there's, I think there's an example of this in the, in the city where it may make more sense.
Like, like hypotheticals that involve Patty. All right. So under, under that scenario, because there's all common ownership, Patty could approve and invite either a food truck she owns, or any other that she wants to invite onto Circle Street, and operate on Circle Street. But to work back to Councilmember Beaton's example, and, you know, play off that, if, if Patty sells one of her properties on Circle Street to Paul, now it wouldn't apply, even if Paul should agree, because now there's not all common ownership within 200 feet. So there are only going to be a few, if even more than one, you know, but it'll be a rare exception where this would apply. So generally, it's going to be a 200-foot restriction, should the amendment pass. But in a few instances, where there's multiple restaurants within the 200 feet, but they're all owned by the same individual or related LLCs, they could make that invitation. Otherwise, it'll be 200 feet, as it currently is.
And we're still discussing the motion to amend? Oh, Councilmember Emanuel?
Thank you, Madam President. Okay. Let's see how well my light bulb is working. So does this mean that this provides more opportunity for a food truck to participate if they were, had that invitation? It's not excluding them, maybe it's more participation?
Correct, for that specific location. That's assuming, you know, again, the original ordinance was written such that no closer than 200 feet. The new proposal is now stating that you can be less than 200 feet, as long as you have the permission of other restaurants within there. I'm proposing that we remove that language, keep it at 200 feet. But in the event these rare occasions arise, they're still afforded that, that luxury of having a food truck if they choose to. Those particular, and it, it's a question that's come before the city staff twice recently, and that's why it's part of this.
May I ask a follow-up? Thank you. So then, under the motion of 6B, does that kind of serve the similar purpose of getting permission, as, as was prepared for us in our packet?
Yeah, again, answering the question in regards to why they still have to get permission, it's there, just because in the event if someone were to question it, the food truck is next to a restaurant, and perhaps somebody just wanted to make sure that they had the permission of the restaurant owner, it was there on site.
Councilmember Strobel?
I just feel like, to clarify, I, I would think it's, it's less restrictive than the original, and, and slightly more restrictive than what was proposed. Is that fair?
Member Weld?
Yeah, I mean, I guess I'm, I would, maybe now, just kept this a little simpler. It is, it is keeping it as it was. Really, the whole intent of this is to keep it as it was. 200 feet, not allowing people to be closer to the restaurants with the permission of restaurants, for the reason of administratively not having to, to handle that, removing any animosity, or, or tension between restaurant owners and businesses that are neighbors. But then, because the question came up, again, to the city staff on two separate occasions, with common ownership, is this, is this still an option, then? And so we decided to include it in the motion. But again, rarely will we ever have to work with this. But yes, it is a little more advantageous to the food truck owners when it does happen, because now they can be a part of the event. I just wonder. I guess, I'm sorry, did you have another question?
Oh, I think it's a quick one. I noticed the language in the amendment says a written invitation versus written permission. And I'm wondering if that is significant, or if they mean the same thing, i.e., written permission. Like, does, can the food truck initiate that, or do they have to wait to be invited?
Ms. Strick?
We drafted that understanding, at least, that Councilmember Weld indicated, indicated that it needed to be an invitation from the restaurant. If that's not the intent, you should probably shift back to the language of what's in the proposal. But the way, the way the amendment is drafted, it would have to be initiated by the restaurant.
Councilmember Weld?
Thank you. And I, again, not to reiterate, I'll, I'll be brief. I, I want to, like I said, have, have a voice for the bricks and mortar. I've, I've owned three bars and restaurants in Eau Claire, and, and understand that, what it means and what it takes to, to be a part of that. And I want to respect what they bring to the community also. And again, not slighting our food vendors in any way, because I am excited about the idea of having both working together, but still being respectful to what's, you know, what's at stake here for- We think of events when we're downtown, and we're maybe enjoying something from a food vendor, and, and have to go to the bathroom. I mean, where are we going? We're looking for the nearest restaurant or bar, because they are there, and, and we'll have a clean public restaurant that we can use. So, I, I think we, we, we just need to make sure that we're not creating a difficult situation, and, and again, that tension. And really, the whole purpose of it was not to, not to make it harder to understand.
I'm going to see if Councilmember Worthman, does that mean you have a question?
No, no statement. Comment?
Okay.
Thank you, Council President. So, going back to this, I think there's been some confusion around the language, but I think what Councilmember Weld has said is that this is less restrictive than the original language that we had last year. But it is more restrictive than what sits on our table right now, that's being proposed. And that is because our old language said you couldn't have a food truck within 200 feet restaurant. What's being proposed tonight, the, the one on the table that we have, says, if you got written permission within 200 feet from all restaurants, you could. Now, with this amendment, what it's saying is, that's no longer the case, but if there's a restaurant that's under common ownership, or a number of restaurants under common ownership, they would be allowed to have it, and then you would have to also, if they're, keep in mind, there's an "and" between A and B. So, you would have to, they'd have to be all under common ownership, and you have to get, mobile food establishments obtains written invitation from all of those restaurants. Keep in mind, there's probably only a few places in our entire community where that's even possible. So, you know, if we can kind of put that in perspective of what's being proposed by Councilmember Weld, what was on the books from last year, again, I think that the resolution, or the ordinance we have actually strikes a pretty good balance, and I'll be supporting that and not voting for this amendment.
Councilmember Greger?
Thank you, Council President. Basically, the way I read this motion, this amendment, is actually almost exactly the same as the original, because it, it still requires permission. It just acknowledges the fact that some of those entities, some of those license, restaurant license holders, could be owners of, you know, other restaurants in that area. Is that, or am I incorrect in that simplification of this?
No, even if you own several restaurants, again, you are only, I'm, I'm stating, let's keep the ordinance as it was regarding 200 feet. No, no business, no food vendors near, near than 200 feet to a restaurant. So, yes, that, that I'm proposing stays the same as it has been, eliminating the language that they can get permission to be closer than 200 feet, but also offering the opportunity in the event that there is that rare occasion, where there is a business owner that owns a building, that he wants to host an event with a food truck, and there just happens to be a restaurant that's within that 200 feet, which would prevent him from having a food truck. But he owns that restaurant, that person can still have a food truck.
Councilmember Emanuel?
Thank you. Thank you very much, Councilmember Weld, and for your patience. You can get some pointers from my grandma, that I'm not always the quickest person in the room, so she can help you out for next time. So, you know, after taking some time to really try to digest this, I'm not going to be able to support this, and there's two reasons why. The first is that one of the criticisms that the city received two years ago is that this was too restrictive, and I don't think making it more restrictive is going to be helpful. The second is, there's been talk tonight about trying to minimize tensions between businesses, and I think it's important that we foster, at least for me, it's important to do my part to foster healthy, instead of cooper, competition, I've heard the phrase "coopetition," already used in our community, that there is a benefit of working together, and knowing that each of these types of businesses can actually help each other. In fact, many bricks and mortars find that they are more successful, and they're more profitable, because food trucks are in the community. And so, I think it's a good idea for us to create policies that allow the market to have a bit of that choice, and to also frame it as we're cooperating together.
We exhausted our discussion on the motion to amend. Let's call the vote on the motion to amend.
Councilmember Emanuel?
No.
Greger?
No.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
No.
Jean?
Aye.
Anderson?
No.
Beaton?
No.
Bergy?
No.
Kristofferson?
No.
And that motion fails seven to four. Right? So, we're back to the resolution on mobile food trucks as unamended. I believe there are more motions coming. Right? Councilmember Weld?
If I dare.
Sure.
I would like to move, or make a motion to amend, striking the language in regards to the Schlegel Milch Lot, and I can expand after a second.
A motion has been offered by Councilmember Weld, and seconded by Councilmember Strobel, to, I guess, we'll see your motion in a moment, but essentially to delete the reference to the Schlegel Milch Lot.
So, a couple of reasons here. Again, you know, we did hear from, from a restaurant owner last night, and, you know, I just want to say that in that listening session, that I, I thought that the food vendors were really respectful of, of the bricks and mortar restaurants, and they, they did express that they understand that there is, you know, that, that overhead for them, but, so along that same train of thought, I, I felt like, this is not a city park, this is not a place where we're going to have a, a, a once-a-week event, or we're going to have an occasion where, you know, if something's happening downtown. This is something where they can actually set up their, their, their truck every day of the week at lunch, and, and the Schlegel Milch Lot, without paying any rent, or without having any overhead, or without having any cost, really, it's, it becomes at the city's cost that they're allowed to do that, but yet still competing on, you know, Acoustic Cafe and other restaurants that are dependent on, on that, their business, and lunches and breakfasts, and so on. So, I, I felt like we've set a precedent, we've stated parks, and we've talked about city streets, but the, the parking lot thing kind of threw me for a loop, and again, was along the same lines as my past motion. But, secondly, and I know this isn't in concrete yet, but I know the Schlegel Milch Lot is slated to be the temporary bus transit area, if all goes well with, with that new transit center, which could, you know, start as soon as next spring. And so, it would not be available at that time, from what I understand. And I'm not sure how long that construction process will be, if it's one summer, or if it's two summers, but, so I just thought, again, I, I really do want to be that voice, if we can, with the, with the bricks and mortar, and that's my motion.
Councilmember Strobel?
Yeah, and I'll, I'll support that, too. I, I think we, we, we named a lot of new parks, and, and eased a lot of the restrictions and stuff, and I just don't, I don't see parking lots fitting into this at this point. And I guess I'd, I'd be concerned about all the other public parking lots we do have downtown that are right next to a lot of bricks and mortar places, and so I'll support it.
Senator Worthman?
Thank you, Council President. If I could ask a question, maybe it's of the city manager, city attorney, about the, why, why the designation of Schlegel Milch versus others? Maybe is that for proximity reasons to other, to restaurants?
I can try that one. It was ultimately a decision in conjunction with engineering and economic development. The food trucks had requested a spot downtown that they could operate, and Phoenix Park is only sometimes available, so this was an attempt to accommodate a, a location for that, because with the restaurant setbacks, a lot of the streets downtown are, are blocked out, essentially.
Thank you.
I have a follow-up to that. Councilmember Beaton?
Thank you. I actually have a follow-up to that question. Sorry to bring you up again. So, would you say that this, that the Schlegel Milch Lot, if, if we were to, if, would this be the only location downtown without a special events permit, that a food truck, truck would be able to operate under the permit?
I don't know that it's the only spot, and I haven't seen updated maps for the streets. I'm sure there are little pockets in the street where they could operate, but it was the only central location where they would be able to be.
Okay. Thank you.
Member Emanuel?
Thank you, Madam President. I will not be supporting this motion. I think it's an excellent first volley at increasing access to additional food trucks in our community, and I think it is a practical matter, that our downtown has limited street real estate, so to speak, for food trucks, and when we think about developing really that side of Farwell, this is a neat opportunity. There's been a lot of love in other parts of downtown, and this is an opportunity to open up some love on Farwell.
Further discussion? Councilmember Beaton?
Thank you. I think it'd be, I don't suppose we have the maps for those pockets of downtown where a food truck could operate, other than the Schlegel Milch Lot, but it would be helpful to see. I guess that's definitely, you know, depending on how much of that kind of space exists, that would be helpful to know. But I, I guess I don't suppose we have those maps here. Okay.
Senator Greger?
Thank you, Council President. I, I feel like there's, you know, this is kind of treading down a new path, you know, to include a, a parking lot in this one. One of the concerns I have about using this particular lot is that the lot is, is not in very good condition. So, I'm not sure if staff has a, has any considerations that, from a safety standpoint, or just a lot condition standpoint, that, that were concerning as well. But obviously, there are, there is extra capacity in that lot for some other activities other than parking cars, and, and, you know, there are a lot of people that use that, that lot, and for different purposes, on weekends, on, on weekdays. It has a, it has a flow to it that maybe is different than other lots, and we did recently make it free parking, is my understanding, as a city, so. So, I'm inclined to give this a try, and I think that's a lot of what this is about here, is, is trying some new things to see if we can spur on some, some, some more business and, and opportunities for people, and, so, that's kind of where I'm at on it, and I don't know if staff has a, a thought regarding safety of that lot, in terms of just increasing the number of people, and, and actually having businesses in that space.
Yes, we'll leave that as a rhetorical question, unless somebody pops up to, we can probably make our own assessment in our head, too. Councilmember Strobel?
I have a question. Under this 5B, there's all the parks, and I can't remember off the top of my head, but didn't, didn't they have to be 500, no, there's 500 feet or something, but let's go back to the 200-foot. Would they still have to get permission in all these places if they were within 200 feet of a, a restaurant? And/or, what was that 500-foot, if anybody can remember, that we talked about, being away from? Is that what it was? Okay. So, I guess my question would be, in any of these, in, in any of 5B, do they still have to adhere to that, being 200 feet away from a, a restaurant, and/or having their permission?
Ms. Strunberger? Or, Mr.?
Generally, we've interpreted it to be if they're within a listed property within a park, you know, Phoenix Park is within proximity to the restaurants. If they're within the boundaries of the city property, then they're fine.
Just want to kind of talk out loud for a little bit, what my thoughts were, and I guess the goal of this original motion appears to be, well, it stated, lower entry barriers for potential applicants, which is why I voted against the previous amendment, but though with the parking lot, it does seem like it poses additional challenges, maybe what you're alluding to, Councilmember Greger, about safety and such, so, it's just what I'm thinking. But I do understand that the goal of this is to lower entry barriers for potential applicants, so.
Councilmember Emanuel?
Thank you, Madam President. I'll share a little bit of context of what I remember from our conversation a couple years ago, is that food trucks tend to do really well, and you start to foster that food truck community, when you have a space where a bunch of food trucks can come together. And so, in some communities, they have something called, I think, a food truck rodeo, where it's like, a Wednesday night, a bunch of food trucks, they feed off of each other. Right now, we have some restrictions where we only allow up to two food trucks, period, and that, some food trucks, owners have shared with me, that that just does not foster that kind of food truck community. So, that's what I see, is it's probably the first identified space to actually have, really, a destination, a food truck destination with multiple spaces, so, however that may weigh out into colleagues' decisions, just wanted to put that out there as additional information.
Councilmember Weld?
Thank you, Council President. Again, my concern is the, I appreciate the idea that, to, to bring more food trucks downtown, I, I do, but if, if they are there, and are able to be there every day, from 11 o'clock until 3 o'clock, at no cost to them, offering lunch to everyone that works downtown, or patrons downtown, how is that fair to the other businesses that, that have the, the overhead and the taxation? And, I mean, they're, we're, we're providing a free spot, and then taking business away from others, I, I don't, I guess I don't understand that rationale.
Is the question, but a, could a brick and mortar restaurant have a food truck to compete against other food trucks? I mean, that would be an option for them?
Certainly.
Oh, thank you. Just one more thing on it, I don't want to beat it, beat it to death, but, starting in a parking lot is, maybe just, that parking lot might just be one step, but, I mean, I, I'm thinking of a lot- of a lot of other parking lots that are very close to a lot of different restaurants. You've got the Four Corners Lot, you've got the Railroad Lot, the lot across from the livery, and, you know, it's just, if we start allowing the food trucks to set up in the parking lots for free, I think they will be taking away business from the bricks and mortar that actually do pay property taxes, and have a big investment in people, not only just the restaurant people, but they employ a lot of people as well, and I just don't think it's a good precedent to set.
Okay, councilmember Anderson?
I really appreciate all of the different sides people are bringing to this debate. What sticks with me is a couple of experiences I've had in other cities, attending some of these food truck rodeos, and I understand the sense of it being a slippery slope, allowing this sort of free space for food trucks to go into parking lots, and I can see how that could become a problem, but another part of me thinks that trying this out in a parking lot is actually a great idea, because if later on, we want to explore possibilities in the Canary District, or Tiff District, and getting people to come and explore the businesses in other areas of town, having had a test project where we saw what happens when food trucks can mobilize in an area, and draw people to an area, might be really useful information for us to have later, if we are wanting to bring economic development to other areas. I'm not sure if that's making sense, but I think that the mobility of food trucks is something that we could really use, as a city, as a tool to promote economic development in different areas of the city. Thanks.
Councilmember Gregert?
Thank you, council president. I am hearing different, you know, perspectives here, and it is, you know, still, I'm still a little, I am a little bit undecided, because, I mean, we're looking at a lot here that is, doesn't have very much infrastructure, and the infrastructure that it does have is crumbling. There's no, like, shade for people to go and hang out and eat, there's no, there's no real green space, I mean, there is a private parcel that is owned by the Chippewa Valley Museum on that lot, there's a busy road on one side, you know, I think, you know, if the intent of the city is to find a place, you know, where we can start that, building that culture of a food truck rodeo, I don't know if this is, I mean, it's a little bit of a parking desert right now, it's like, you know, a kind of a rough parking lot, in terms of infrastructure, so I'm thinking, maybe there's a better place, and I do hear the point about, you know, we want some flexibility in that area for a new bus transit center, potentially a temporary one there, so, I'm a little bit hesitant for those reasons, that others have stated as well, and just wanted to bring up that extra point about, you know, I go, and I think about other places, like Ramon's opening up a brick and mortar ice cream place, just arguably one of the really amazing businesses, but around it is mostly parking, and there's a few trees, there's a few marginal green spaces to hang out, and I think they're trying to address, you know, finding more places for people to hang out and have ice cream, but there's even less infrastructure for the public to actually enjoy their food over at Schlegel Milch. It's maybe more like a drive-through, unfortunately, so it's, so that's one of my concerns about Schlegel Milch Lot, so, maybe it allows other people to think it through more, too.
Looks like we've exhausted our discussion on this second motion to amend. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gregert?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
No.
Jean?
Aye.
Anderson?
No.
Beaton?
No.
Bergy?
Aye.
Kristofferson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
No.
And that motion passes seven to four. So, now we're back to the ordinance as amended once. Is there further discussion? Councilmember Emanuel?
Thank you, Madam President. I also have an amendment I would like to offer, and that is under section 13.12.066, and in our packets, it is on page 13.2.066, and that is, oh gosh, let me tell you what page it is, under, I, hold on, because I'm looking for it, I can't find it. I see it, okay, on page 170, 170-ish, let me just find, 170, so this would be section I, 5, C, so actually, that will be on page 172. And my motion would be that I would like to strike language under section C, and the language I would strike is "one night per week, comma, on a day and," so essentially, it takes out the restriction for one night a week, and I can speak more to that if I have a second, or?
I'll second. A motion has been offered by councilmember Emanuel, seconded by councilmember Worthman, to eliminate the words "one night per week" in section 5C, on the top of page 172. Did you get that? Okay. Councilmember Emanuel?
Thank you, Madam President. So, I can maybe rephrase that, just to make sure, I've heard it repeated a different way, so, one night, I would strike the language "one night per week, comma, on a day and." Okay, I'm getting an affirmative nod from our clerk, thank you. So, what this is doing is really trying to take down one more barrier for any food trucks. I know that this has been a new proposal to allow additional parks, and however, there is a limitation, it can only be one night per week, and so, what I'd like to see is that the food trucks would have the flexibility, if they were able to build a relationship in the neighborhood, they can go more than one day a week. So, that's the intention of this.
Councilmember Strobel?
Well, so, if you did that, would you then combine B and C together, maybe? Would that make more sense?
If I may?
Member Emanuel?
Thank you, Madam President. I did look at that, however, there's language that says "in a location identified per specifications of a license," so I haven't reviewed the license myself, but I wasn't sure if there was nuances between those additional parks versus the ones identified before, so it seemed a little bit cleaner.
Raveen?
This issue was raised during the Waterways and Parks Commission meeting, there was concern, I think initially, what was suggested was that there would be like a neighborhood, community-wide neighborhood, you know, party kind of thing, where on one day a week, the neighborhood is encouraged to organize their neighbors, and then bring them to the neighborhood park to gather, and meet each other, and then have something to eat at the food truck. And there was, I think initially, the day was a Thursday, which we all know is a big day for community enjoyment, particularly at Phoenix Park, and so there was some concern about, about the city specifying a day for neighborhoods, there was a little bit more comfortability with having one night per week with an unspecified day, or with a specified day, but it not being Thursday, but I think that there was strong interest in just allowing food trucks to be in these parks, kind of intermittently, but that was sort of the intention of this particular section, as I understand it, was that the neighborhood would have the flexibility to organize like a weekly gathering for their neighbors, so.
Member Weld?
Thank you, council president. Yeah, and I think one of the reasons, too, in the discussion, was out of respect to the families that were enjoying these, because these are smaller parks, and I think the thought was, let's just see how it goes with one day a week, and they can pick their day, but then, at the same time, you know, we're not allowing there to be a constant food truck presence in the small park, that maybe distracts from the enjoyment that a family or children are looking to have in that park, that, you know, not every day, just, or I should say, they don't want maybe to be a part of the food truck situation every day, and maybe would prefer to enjoy the park without the business and the traffic, and the additional cars, the other days of the week.
Councilmember Emanuel?
Thank you, Madam President. An additional thing I wanted to point out, a little bit of a follow-up to councilmember Strobel's inquiry of, you know, why not merge them, and the other distinction I failed to mention was that this is still keeping to food trucks only being available to go to these parks in June, July, and August, so there is, you know, nine months out of the year, for sure, food trucks couldn't be there, and this is allowing some of that. And I think, you know, for me, this is an opportunity that we have, sure, we could potentially talk about this every couple of weeks if we wanted to, however, that's not how it works, and practically speaking, and two years ago, food trucks were pretty critical, food truck owners, excuse me, I haven't met a talking food truck yet, but the owners were quite critical, and I think rightfully so, and I think we saw a result of that, of, we had only one license recently, just taken out in two years, so, I really think that we're at a moment of opportunity to try to decrease some barriers, one summer, we can see how it goes, if it's terrible, we can always come back and talk about it, and make a way to make it better, but I think the more opportunities we can create will be better.
Okay, seeing no further discussion on this, oh, councilmember Kristofferson?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm starting to be a little confused, so that if you, if someone would just clarify for me, as I read that point number five, I can't discern whether or not these larger parks also have a restriction for only one day, or if the larger parks, you could go there more than one day a week, but the smaller parks, only one night, that would make a difference to me.
Ms. Stromberger?
Just reading that through myself. The larger parks, you can be there at any time, as long as you're within a designated location in that park, the smaller parks are just the one day a week.
Hey, there being no further discussion on this motion to amend, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Kincaid?
No.
Strobel?
No.
Weld?
No.
Worthman?
Aye.
Jean?
No.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Kristofferson?
No.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
And that motion passes six to five, so we're back to the resolution amended twice. Any other amendments or discussion? And there being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Kristofferson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye. And that ordinance is adopted. That ends our work for the evening, leaving announcements in order. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Madam President. I just have one, and that is to, although we're trying to find a time for the Council Academy, and we've put out a date of the sixth, or fifth of June, that's not going to work for several of you, so we will be looking for some other dates to be able to hold that Council Academy, and that's all I have for announcements tonight.
Any other announcements? Councilmember Strobel?
No, just a question, maybe, we send out something with multiple dates on it, and then, I mean, because it's unlikely we're all going to be able to make every meeting.
There being no further business to come before this body, and without objection on a motion by councilmember Gregert, seconded by councilmember Bergy, we are adjourned.
This program was brought to you by a cooperation between Newsworks and the city of Eau Claire. A transcript of this meeting is available for the hearing impaired. It will be available within seven days of this telecast. Call 715-839-4912, or TDD 715-839-1689, or write Eau Claire City Clerk, PO Box 5148, Eau Claire, Wisconsin 54702-5148. Newsworks is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, please contact us via phone at 715-839-5067, or online at valleymediaworks.org.